Work session agenda on Monday, March 21st, 2016. It's now 5:00 PM. We are all here this evening, although Councilman Stiff is going to be on the phone. So, we're not sure he's there at this moment, but I understand there's some little sound that we're going to hear. So, bear with the sound, whatever it's going to be. And Bill, remind me, would you, as we go on the conversation, that Bill is there? So, we won't leave him out. So, we have two items tonight on the agenda. I would like to remind council to refrain from asking questions now until Michelle says it's question time. We worked it out today, so be comfortable for everybody, okay?
Oh, wow.
So, we're not going to go through the entire and then say, "Okay, questions are now in order." We're going to split them up a little bit. So, I'm going, we're going to be under her direction. So, on 3.1, council and the guest presenters will participate in one of the development mini-series, a multi-part presentation and discussion of industrial office retail activity in the greater Phoenix Goodyear area. I'd like to present Michelle Laurie, our Economic Development Director.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for having us here today. I'm very pleased to be up here with our special guests to discuss with you this part of the development mini-series. On February 1st, you had a work session with Jim Belfiori focused on residential development. And as we promised, we're back this evening with a session on commercial development. To that end, we have three experts here with us this evening from Colliers International, which is a global real estate services leader in the areas of office, industrial, and retail. And as you said, Mayor, with your permission, what I'd like to do, the way I thought would be the best way to structure our work session is for me to just briefly introduce our three guests here first. And this is Tyler Smith, who's going to talk to the office, Don McWilliam, who's going to speak to industrial development, and Larry Ortega, who's going to talk to the retail side. So, I wanted to just have Tyler start with the office, and he's got a PowerPoint presentation. He's going to take about 10 minutes just to go over the market trends and projections area of focus, and then he'll take questions 10 minutes for that speaker. Then we'll move on to the next one, do the same thing in the next. So, we'll have plenty of time for questions. So, that sound okay to you all?
Sounds like a great plan.
Okay, great. So, to start, we have Tyler Smith, who will focus on the office market. Tyler is a vice president whose efforts are focused on the West Valley office property market. Tyler specializes in marketing office buildings for lease and office condominiums for lease or sale, tenant and buyer representation, and commercial land sales. Tyler has specialized in office properties since 1997. I think a few of you know Tyler, Leadership West graduate here. So, Tyler, take it away. And you can just go ahead and tab down when you're ready to go to the next slide.
Oh, this one? Okay. So, thank you again for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm going to give you just a general overview of what's going on with the Phoenix market, and then we'll tab down into more of the Goodyear area. We can talk a little about that, so. So, first thing, a lot of you may want to be wondering where we are in the market. Currently, the office market is in the, we've been recovering, and now we're in the expansion phase of the cycle. So, it's a good time to be an office broker and a good time to be an owner in the market. Some, a variety of things that are occurring right now in the market is, you know, the employment growth is accelerating, vacancy and vacancies are decreasing, inventory, not currently, we don't have any additional inventory, but we're on the precipice of where new development could be happening out here. Certainly, rents are increasing, sales prices are increasing, and again, we've got some construction projects that are starting to gear up in the West Valley. I kind of discussed that already. So, again, the employment growth right now, office-using employment is averaging about 3.4% of growth per year since 2011. The vacancy is improving, which means it's decreasing by about 100 basis points per year since 2012. Rents are increasing 2% in '13, 4.3% in '14, 4.5% in '15, and forecast to be 6.1% this year. So, as you can see, they've been slowly rising, and now they're starting to rise at an increased level. And then around the valley, not yet in the West Valley, but around the valley, we've got about 3 million square feet of space that's currently under construction, primarily East Valley, I would say Chandler, Tempe, Scottsdale. So, here's kind of a snapshot of vacancy absorption, construction, rents, et cetera. As you can see, the vacancy over the last three years has started at 18.4, or 18.1% in 2014. We ended the year at 17.2, and currently, valley-wide, we're at 16.1 forecast for this year, and then decreasing even more to 14.6 in 2017. The absorption is increasing, so we were at 2.8 million or 2.9 million in 2014, ended the year last year at 3.5, and should have another year similar to that this year, and even better in 2017. Construction, about a million and a half square feet in '14, almost double that last year, and similar to that, 2.5 this year. And then the rents, again, the rents have gone from $21 a foot full service up to 22.3 and up to, you know, going to be 23.65 forecasted for this year. And that, again, shows the increase in, you know, the rents aren't just steadily increasing, but they're increasing at a rapid, a faster pace. So, from a vacancy standpoint, again, this is valley-wide in Phoenix. You can see during the recession, we were, you know, just under 30%, and that's trended down to, you know, just under 17% at this point, valley-wide. So, that's, and when you get down to those types of numbers, that's when you start seeing the opportunity for new construction. From a West Valley submarket, here's all the various submarkets, and they are kind of all over the board. The Goodyear market is in the West I-10 submarket, which happens to be, you know, fairly strong. It's, the vacancy actually is lower here than the average in Phoenix. It's at 11.3%. Absorption, not a lot of absorption in the fourth quarter, but for the year, 32,000 feet. Again, not a ton of absorption, but at least the vacancy rates are low. As far as office supply in the West Valley, if you go back the last 10 years, the light blue shows the construction cycle, and there really was a lot of construction in the mid 2000s. And obviously, the recession hit, and the construction pretty much went away, but it's starting to, you know, you're starting to see some construction coming back, hopefully soon. Net absorption also pretty much declined in the recession, but you're starting to see that increase as well now. And you can see the trending line, the red line trends, the vacancy rates, and you can see those are starting to fall. As far as some West Valley leases, most of them are up kind of north of your Valley area or Arrowhead, but here's a few notable transactions in the West Valley over the last year or so. As far as rent trends, you can see from the blue line that they're obviously starting to trend upwards. We're not back to where we were in mid, in 2007 yet, but certainly, we're going in the right direction. So, that's the PowerPoint presentation. The other thing I'll mention or talk about a little bit is, you know, with the West Valley, I've been working out here since 2002. I would also say, from an absorption standpoint, it's been a top-down recovery, meaning that larger corporations have been taking most of the space, and the small businesses, which is more prevalent in the West Valley, has taken longer to recover. But we are seeing those types of users starting to have better attitudes, and they're taking space and starting to grow now. A couple of quick examples, I've got the building at Litchfield and McDowell that Suncor built in 2006. The building's basically full, and, you know, we have a space that just came available at the end of February. It's about 9,000 feet. That's the only vacancy I have out here in that building, and I've already got people looking at it. So, you know, we don't, so far, we haven't seen, you know, 100,000 square foot office users in Goodyear take space. Love to see it. But the local businesses that have been leasing out here are definitely in the market more now than they've ever been.
Okay. Anybody have questions for Tyler, then?
All right. I'm going to turn over to council. Any questions? Is there anything you didn't understand, you want an explanation on, or anything like that? No frustration levels here? Everybody's happy?
No, we'd love to have more.
Good. I didn't want this to go away without someone saying, you know, we want to give you a want here and now.
Well, Tyler, I think he kind of covered my question there towards the end, talking about specifics of Goodyear to rest of the valley. You know, I wanted to hear some of that, so you did cover that a bit.
And I can elaborate a little bit on that. So, one thing, I will say, I think Goodyear's done a great job as far as economic development, and I know Don's had some, you know, talked more on the industrial side, but, you know, you've certainly seen a lot of positives from Goodyear as compared to your others, you know, other folks in the different cities. So, Goodyear's definitely very pro-growth. The other, one of the other benefits I see with Goodyear compared to some of the other markets in the West Valley is that you've got so many homes here that have been here for more than 10 years, 30 years. And so, whether it's Litchfield Park or Goodyear, local tenants tend to want to be, you know, near their clients. And so, there's a lot of clients in Goodyear as opposed to, let's say, Avondale or Buckeye, where those are just, those are a lot of new homes, but it's not, they're newer and just haven't been here as long. So, there's a lot of benefits for tenants to be in the Goodyear market. That's a strength that I think Goodyear has compared to some of the other cities in the area.
I appreciate that, because that's a strength that we hadn't really
Absolutely, a strength.
...thought about, and that, I think it's something you can talk about, so.
Absolutely. And then, the other thing is, if you look at a map, it's just a matter of time. I mean, I don't work out in the East Valley, but, you know, at some point, you're going to be taking, if you're looking at leasing, or, I mean, if you're looking at living in the East Valley, and you want to go to a Suns game or a Cardinals game, you're going to be an hour to an hour and a half drive. And Goodyear's 20 minutes from downtown and quick to the Cardinals. And so, you know, at some point, it's going to be an attractive place for a large headquarters to be. It's just not there yet. You know, I think what we run into with some of the larger companies is that the East Valley is on a little bit of a roll right now, and obviously, they've got some larger companies already there, so they tend to congregate with them. But, you know, and I've worked with you over, you know, at Westmark, and we talk about this all the time, but at some point, it's going to, it's going to break, and we're going to get, you know, large headquarters to hit, you know, Goodyear or the West Valley. It's just a matter of when it happens.
Thank you. Joanne?
Just my follow-up question, you know, before the recession, we spoke a lot about Class A office space needing to be out here. And so, in your opinion, I mean, unless I'm gathering it wrong, we're not quite there yet that we have that need to fulfill here yet, because obviously, we don't have the buildings, per se, either. So, is there anything you can add about that?
Yes. So, when working over the last few years with the recession, it's been more of a demand problem than it has been, I mean, as you can see, the vacancy is down to where, you know, if you're looking for good space, you're going to have a hard time finding it out here. What we haven't had over the last five to seven years is the demand. So, and that's getting better, but it's not quite there yet. So, you know, if you're, we have office meetings every two weeks in our office, and there's a lot of large users that are circling, but they're looking for, you know, generally, they want to be in the East Valley. And so, what we need at this point is, we need the demand to increase enough to where it's worthwhile to build a new building. And that's, you know, again, it's getting better, and it'll happen. I just don't know when it, you know, it should happen in the next 12 to 18 months, I would think.
Ooh.
But hope.
Well, that's sooner.
Well, I mean, because, again, otherwise, I mean...
I had two things told to me tonight that were kind of exciting.
Yeah. I mean, and we're not going to probably build a 300,000-foot building, but if you, you could probably build a 60 or 100, similar to what you see out here already. And that's, you know, that's a lot of jobs if you can get those full.
Okay, write that down. He said that.
I got it. That's reasonable. Sherry?
Yeah, I was wondering, along the same lines, if it's something these corporations are looking for, basically something that's already built, and then they just do the tenant improvements? Or, you know, is it more, they want to build it themselves? What are they looking for?
Well, so, it's difficult, because obviously, if there's tenants out there looking for space now, generally, they're going to new buildings that are being built already. And they will have to do tenant improvements, and it's mostly shell space.
Yeah.
So, that takes, you know, five to six months. But the catch-22 on it is, if you're a landowner and you're a developer, and you want to build a new building, you can't, most of them aren't going to, especially with what they went through 10 years ago, they're not going to build a building spec unless they know that they've got enough activity out there where they're going to fill it. So, that's what we're waiting for, is just the activity to increase to where it's worthwhile. And I know there's, you know, there's a couple of developers in town or local here in Phoenix that are considering West Valley projects, they just haven't kicked them off yet.
And for the West Valley, what are we competing more against when we're looking to develop an area, more against a pure Arrowhead, or more against a Glendale, or Gilbert?
Well, right now...
I was just focusing West Valley.
So, Georgia hit it. I would say, right now, it's Gilbert, because, probably not Gilbert, more like Chandler. And you can, if you look at the absorption that we have, a lot of it's build-to-suit and/or product, office product that's being built in Chandler, or Tempe, obviously, with the State Farm deal, or even Scottsdale. From a West Valley standpoint, I would say Goodyear probably would compete with Arrowhead more so than, because again, that's another more, a little more established home base and that type of, it's not new. Glendale is struggling. I mean, Westgate obviously still hasn't come back yet, but the reason is, if you're an accountant, or a doctor, or whatever, you want to be near your population that lives near Goodyear or in Arrowhead. Not, just because it's on a freeway doesn't mean you're going to want to drive 15 minutes to go see your accountant, when you can find one at Litchfield and McDowell, or Dice Art and McDowell, or 75th and Bell, for that matter. So, until there's some more homes in the Westgate area, or unless they land, you know, some more corporate-type users, it's going to take a little longer for Glendale.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, Michelle, Molly, did you have a question? The floor is yours.
Okay, great. Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to Don McWilliam, who's Executive Vice President, who will focus on the industrial market. Don has been in commercial real estate since 1986, specializing in industrial real estate sales and leasing in the West Valley. Don's services include tenant representation and agency listings from many major developers, and he represents many buildings in our community as well. Don?
Wow, that's a long time I've been here. I kind of forgot about all of that. But thanks for having me here today, guys. I've seen some faces that I haven't seen for a while, and it's nice to catch up with everybody. The West Valley's been good to my brother and me. We have been out here for 29, almost 30 years. Matter of fact, the first building that we, that was west of 59th Avenue was in, I think it was 1992, was the Mission Land Company build a building out of 83rd Avenue in Tollison. And when we used to, when we used to go from 43rd Avenue or I-17 all the way to 59th Avenue, you'd say, "Wow, you're back out in the cotton fields." And when that building was built, it was literally a diamond in the desert. So, to see what's happened to the West Valley in my tenure, and a lot of people that have been here for a while, it's, I mean, it's pretty exciting to see where Goodyear's going right now. Buckeye still, I think, has still got a little ways to go, but I mean, we're, we've seen Tollison. Matter of fact, quick story, we went to City of Tollison when we got into the business and met with the city manager, Ralph Vellis, who was there for a awful long time. And Ralph sat down with us, and he said, "Look, we're, we want some development in Tollison," where, at the time, I think Smith Foods was the only deal that had happened out there right at Van Buren and 99th Avenue. And then Snapple came. There was a bunch of people that started coming and looking at the land because it was inexpensive. We asked him, he said, we said, "Ralph, what do you want to be? I mean, who do you want to be? What does Tollison really want to be at the end of the day?" And he said, "Don," he says, "we need, we need development in Tollison." And we said, "Okay, well, we can help you." We had a piece of land at 99th Avenue and Buckeye, and we started bringing some build-to-suits. We bought the Prosta factory. I mean, we did a lot of different things that came in our Western Container. We did a lot of different things and found out how quickly and what a blessing it was to have a community that was so tied together and connected that we were able to get permits and construction underway, literally, in 30 days. And that was a blessing. That really kind of kicked off Tollison, and I think if you look back, and now with Reyes, and who's taken over, and all of the development that we've done in Tollison, you'll see that they said, "You know what? That was a great deal for us." I think now they're kind of shifting towards getting some retail into the City of Tollison because they've got enough industrial. But I think the benchmark or the mainstay for them of getting the industrial started in there and getting that revenue and get the real estate taxes boosted was a big deal for them. So, going forward, and again, I've got a presentation here, and we can go over data, but I think you guys want to hear at this particular point what's going on out there. The West Valley has been, last year was a fairly good year. We're not, we're not in a true recovery mode, but we're kind of clipping along. I mean, 2015, we have an average, we have an average net absorption out on the West Valley of about 2.8 million square feet. When I say net absorption, that means over and above the buildings that were built. So, if we hit our numbers of an average of 2.8 million square feet with the new construction that's going on, I think we've had a healthy year. Now, it wasn't a great year because there wasn't a lot of velocity. Of that 2.8 million square feet that were absorbed, 2 million square feet of that comprised of only six deals. And if you look at some of the slides in the presentation, I mean, we did, we were in a lot of the deals out there. We had, there we go, there we go. Tuesday morning, we brought for almost 600,000 square feet. We did Stitch Fix for 365,000 square feet, and then they just expanded in another 120,000 square feet. Mattress Firm, we did a brand-new development in Tollison where they took 170. Sherwood went right next to them for 142,000 square feet. And that building, those two tenants both landed before the roof was done. So, if you look at some of, I mean, that's kind of amazing when you start seeing all of the, you know, there's 5.5 million square feet out there just in the West Valley of big-box distribution buildings, and a new building comes up, and we were able to pre-lease some things with two really, really good companies. Omco Solar, we brought into Phoenix for, we originally did 182,000 square feet, and then we did an expansion for them for 131 to fill up another building in there. So, we've been able to take, and we're really, literally, just ready to announce in about another week, about another 700,000 square feet of new net absorption into the West Valley. So, I think those are the kind of things that you guys like to hear, that's the kind of things that we as brokers like to hear, my wife likes to hear it. And I think Goodyear is in that mode right now of attracting some very good opportunities. I happen to represent the Tower Sublease out at the Rubbermaid facility right now, where they've got 458,000 square feet. We're very close to landing a deal in that building, but it was a storage deal. And now, we've got another big user that's looking at the building as well, which we've had, we've had some site visits to, and we're not ready to talk about it yet, but you know what? We're keeping our fingers crossed. And then, I also represent the Sun Life Building out in, on Litchfield Road, south of, south of Lower Buckeye down there, that we've got First Solar in right now. Sun Life is actively marketing that building right now. We've got, Sun Life has given back, or they're going to give back 100, 241,000 square feet of that building. So, we're going to be bringing some other users in, and with Harry and Michelle, we've looked at it, have had a couple of users come down there and look at the area. So, I think from that perspective of tenant activity, you've got absorption that's been pretty strong. We've had new construction. We're kind of in that cycle right now. And I was at a meeting the other day where everybody was kind of talking about what inning, you guys have a ballpark here in town, a pretty couple of good ballparks with a couple of good teams in town, what inning we were in, in our recovery. They were talking about the seventh inning on a national basis, which I find very, that was disturbing to me. I mean, because we haven't had any of the home building situation kind of clip along and add to what our market has done right now. And I'm thinking we're in the third inning, maybe the bottom of the third inning, something like that. I think, I think maybe the top of the fourth, because we, the velocity just has not kicked in for the kind of users that we really want to look at right now. We've had a lot of build-to-suit activity up to 303. I think Kevin Swirwinski and Merritt and Sunbelt have done a great job of attracting, and I think they're really, they're working on some very, very big deals up there right now, which could add to that base and absorb some more land. Matter of fact, they just sold some land to First Industrial, about 78 acres, where they plan to build up to a million square feet up there, and they talked them into, matter of fact, First Industrial, which is one of the largest real estate investment trusts in the country, they talked them into probably building a spec building of around 600,000 square feet. Now, does the market need it? Okay? Is the market ready for that? With 458,000 square feet that we've got with Towers sitting out there, with the First Solar building giving back 240,000 square feet, with some other vacancies in the West Valley, when you start looking at the larger users, they're not, they don't, they don't mind driving a little bit further, whether that's Goodyear, whether you have the infill location. So, having some bunch of buildings and another spec building up to 303, you know what? If somebody's got the wherewithal and the patience to fight through that, I think that location is a very, very good location. Michelle asked me to talk today about what I would do to attract manufacturing jobs, because I think everybody wants to see those kind of jobs in our world right now. The distribution jobs are great, and I think we've got a great labor pool to sustain those kind of people coming in, those kind of users coming in, the distribution companies coming in. But that's your 13, your $12 to $14 an hour labor. I think you guys are looking for something different right now. One of the things that's been a very successful venture in my world in, on an infill location is having the right tax district and what you can promote that with, and how you can promote that. Now, I'm going to kind of go out and ask a question here right now. How far outside of the box do you guys want to look, from a council? I mean, are you, are you looking for ideas, or are you looking to maintain, or are you looking to do something new and different in your world right now?
As long as it doesn't get in the governor's way, that's all. Whenever, when you mention tax right now, we're all a little bit alarmed.
Okay, well...
So, we'd have to fall within certain guidelines that we wouldn't have ourselves digging a hole.
Okay.
Sorry, a little...
Foreign trade zone is not, okay, is certainly an avenue, but it takes away from a lot of different things. Matter of fact, I was in a meeting today where we talked about some land that's really in the outer reaches, but it's in Goodyear, but it's probably decades away from being developed. What do you do? How do you get there? What do you, what do you do differently that's going to attract these users and make it more palatable for marketing efforts and for users to be attracted? To me, this land that may be 10, 15 years out, and again, I'm trying to keep it as a very simplistic approach, we've got to set up a zone or a district, a taxing district, that allows these users to come in there and not take it away from the school districts, because nobody wants to take that revenue that the school districts need, but take the schools out of that equation. If we were able to set up, and again, we've got, we've got the 303 going up north where you get the distribution, we've got the foreign trade zone, we've got a lot of that activity going on. If we were to set up a district south of town, okay, somewhere in an area that, my gosh, what are we going to do? When is it going to get there? How are we going to, at the end of the day, make that a viable working community for the users in town? We've got to set up some sort of district that promotes a benefit to the users to come there. When we start talking about distribution-related activities three, four miles south of the freeway, every mile off the freeway changes the scope of how a user or a distribution company looks at going away from the freeway. To me, that kind of changes the complexion of having the distribution park four miles down, call it on 85 or Lower Buckeye, it changes that perspective of how they're going to do it. But the manufacturers that may not have the size, that may not have the transportation corridor, if you offer them an advantage, some advantage that is like the Riverside Tax District in Phoenix, okay? That has been a very, very, very beneficial area to the users in town. We all know that the taxing authorities get their dollars by the capital funding requirements of the school district and any kind of residential. If you're able to take that residential, and again, I'm going outside the box here a little bit, if you're able to take that residential out of the mix, okay, not allow the residential in that area, and call this particular zone some manufacturing zone, I don't know the term yet, but I've been thinking about this. When Michelle started talking to me about it, we've got to offer them some sort of benefit from a property tax standpoint. When you go and you look at the Riverside Tax District versus some of the other seven districts that are in the Phoenix area and Tollison proper, if you go to some of those tax districts, the property tax alone is 3 to 5 cents a square foot. Now, look at a commitment that a company's going to make over a 10- to 15, 20-year commitment if they're going to put 3, 4, 5, $10 million into a building. That difference, and again, you can get the personal property, you can still get that because that's not going to change, but I think the property tax evaluation, if you could able, were able to make that a little bit modified, where that sets up just for the manufacturers in that area, where they can save 3 to 5 cents a foot, you're going you're going to start having something you can market, something you can target. And that, none of the other districts are doing that right now because they're focusing. Everybody's been, everybody's been poor. Everybody's been preaching, "Look, we don't have any money right now." I get that. I'm not trying to take that away from what we're doing. But give me something, or give the market something that you can use as an advantage to you right now, that to me is a start. We've got to have something that takes that land and puts it into play, not with a foreign trade zone. It's already got it up the 303. But there's a bunch of land down south of town right now that is 10 to 20 years away from being developed. How do we get that in the mix? We've got to do something different.
Ready for questions?
Question for Dawn. You'd like to be first. Joe? Oh, you're good. Joanne?
Okay. So, thinking outside the box and south of town, something that would be wonderful for you to be thinking about and give us ideas is what to do with the Trotter Track. That could be something that would be...
Presented by Colliers International.
We have that. Matter of fact, there's investors looking at that right now. There's three investors that are targeting that right now. However, I'm talking south, even further south.
Further south.
Oh, yeah. I'm talking about Lower Buckeye State Route 85. Go even further down there.
Okay, okay.
That's the land that I'm talking about. That's, that literally, it's going to be a while before you guys ever see any revenue out of that. If it's zoned ag right now, if we can get it into some light industrial, even heavy industrial, where you can attract those users and offer, put that land into play, where we're not, literally, we're not taking away from the school district because ag land, you're not making a lot of money on the ag land anyway, but put into some, and again, once it's gone, it's gone. I mean, set up a thousand acres or whatever. When you look at the Rubbermaid plant out west, and you start looking at what that looks like from a first impression, when you drive up to that building, it's rough. It's tough. I mean, it's hard, it's hard for a user to come in there, and once you get inside, it's tough also. But that's a function of money. That's a function of having a vision. If you set up a, an area down south of town where you could have, you know, you could put your streets in. You don't have to put all the amenities in, but at least get the monument signage out there. Get those things out there. Have a relative advantage that you can offer for those guys. I think you have something there that you can put that land in play a lot sooner than you're thinking about right now. Because nobody's looking at it right now. You talk to the owners down there. They're sitting there going, "When are we ever going to see anything down here?" It's going to be a while. So have a plan. Come up with another plan.
So what we hear often on the dialysis when getting into this discussion, if we expend any money, we may never get it back. So there's some hesitancy here. And so I think what you talked about tonight is helpful. But I think you have to take that, in my view, I think you've got to move and take the extra step. That's my philosophy. But I know that here, I think this conversation is good because I'm, what I'm hoping, it will stimulate a second conversation behind what's happening tonight. So what have you found for those cities that have done that? Have they been, has it cost them more than they had anticipated? Or has it left them with their, you know, their hands empty?
If you, if you, if you go to the developers in the area and you offer them a clear advantage of being able to come in and work partnership, and I don't know, a joint venture. And again, I don't think the city has to bear all the burden of putting all of this in. But if you designate the area for them to where they can show a clear advantage, and again, I haven't talked to anybody down there. I don't even know where it would be. I just know that it would be south, down south, because you've got to put that land into play. And there's not a lot of ways to get down into there. You've got, you know, you've got the airport sitting right there. You've got Litchfield Road, and you've got the 303 going down through that area. But circumventing down into that area down south, you're going to have the reliever that's going to come along there at some point. That's still a ways away, okay? Let's get it in play a little bit more. We start seeing some activity in through there. You start seeing some developers taking some of the land from some of the speculators down there because they do have a clear advantage, okay? Then you've got the marketing efforts that everything's kind of snowballing and starts turning one step at a time. Right now, there's no clear plan, and everybody that's sitting down there with land is sitting there going, "Gosh, how long is it going to be before I even see anything? And what are we going to be? And how long is it going to take for us to get there?"
Well, and it's lack of jobs again.
Well, it's jobs, but it's a commitment.
Jobs may not be high-paying, but there are some jobs there that would be.
But it's a commitment. When I talk about the Riverside Tax District, there's just a box, okay? It's Van Buren to Broadway, 59th Avenue to 39th Avenue. That's a box. That's all it is. There's no more residential that's going to be built in there, and there's only one school. If you limit that and you figure out how you can take that tax advantage to the user at the end of the day, they'll come. I'm just telling you, they'll be there.
We'll look into that, so.
Molly?
Well, I'm a real out-of-the-box person. For a couple of committees, or a couple of meetings, when we've had folks come, developers, and everybody's kind of sitting around waiting to see who's going to shovel the dirt first, I have said several times to the city, "We need to perhaps find a way to help them do whatever they need to do so that they can get going in their area." I moved here from California, so I'm very familiar with a lot of the districts. And I have found over the years that when they wanted to stimulate growth or stimulate a certain area, especially in the rural area, they would do specific district, taxing districts, and the developers would come and they would build. But as a city, I don't know that we have really looked at that. I would like to have more conversations on it because I'm very open to talking about it and seeing if in fact we could do that or at least put something in place that future councils down the road would reap the benefit of our vision if we were to set that up. It's not something that's going to happen immediately. And I have toured the Rubbermaid Building, and you're right, it does not look very nice outside. It just looks like abandoned property, and inside's even worse. Oh, I shouldn't say that. If anybody's listening, it's a lovely building.
Lovely.
It's lovely. It's empty, and it needs a lot of work.
It's had its day in the sun.
It needs a lot of work. But it is something that someone could take if it fits what they're trying to do and really make a wonderful home base for them. But I appreciate you coming forward with what your thoughts are. I've often said that I wish we could entice more developers to spec-build out in Goodyear because I know we could fill those buildings if they were built in the right way and it was for, or perhaps even the right location, you know, locations, everything. But I look around Goodyear with some of the empty shopping centers and things, and I've seen how the synergy of our city is moving away from certain areas that it used to be in many, many years ago. And I think we need to capitalize on that so that we really have a say on where we're going and who's going to develop.
If you want manufacturing jobs, you're not going to want them in the center of the town. You're not going to put them back up here closer to the freeway.
No, we want them south.
You want them south.
We do.
So give yourself a plan. Give yourself, at least give yourself a vision of how you're going to get there. Don't just sit there and wait for somebody, something to happen because you guys as a council, I think, have an obligation to help, you know, promote and get the tax revenues, get the, promote businesses. If you want the jobs, you've got to take a little bit of pain with it, okay? Is there going to be a lot of pain? You know, if you bring the developers in with you that have the ability to come in and put the infrastructure in, where you've got the plan, the master plan set up, I think you're on the right road.
Thank you.
You bet.
Jerry? I just have another question. We're talking about industrial and an area that, we get a few buildings around our airport. It's actually, I guess, Phoenix's airport in Goodyear, but we have a lot of vacant land surrounding that.
Yep.
Any suggestions? Is that another area for a taxing district, or what would you suggest to best?
You know, there's a lot of people that are pretty proud of that land that are in and around the airport. And I think they're, you know, they think they've got, you know, I use golden to door jam sometimes, you know? I mean, it's something different than what they really have. And when you start looking at what's happened with Scottsdale, when you start looking at what's happened with Glendale, Glendale's done a decent job up there with Glen Harbor Business Park. They've done a decent job up into their business, developing that park. I don't think, to me, you've got to have, for the developers to come in and be a partner of yours, or at least come in and take it down, it's got to be priced at a deal where the rents make sense. And we're not talking about, you know, 80-cent rents or a dollar a square foot rents for industrial property right now. And you just don't, if the land around the airport is sitting there and they're asking, you know, $4 or $5 for unimproved land, you've still got to put another buck and a half in to get it up to where it's shovel-ready. You're, those people have a long-term vision, and I think we've got to be, we've got to be a little bit shorter term than what these folks are having. A lot of people just sit on it and wait till something happens. And they're okay with that. But to me, I think that you look for the less expensive land, another opportunity. If they're going to miss it, then you know what? That's, there's nothing we can do about it. You've got to go buy them.
Okay.
I'd love to do the infill. I'd love to fill in that land around the airport.
I would too.
I really would. You know, but.
That's too much.
On the east side of the airport, there's just, all of that, the buildings are older, they're tired. I mean, and the developments look a little bit tired. So I mean, spicing things up, spending a little bit of money and doing some things, cleaning some things up. Maybe ask the question a little bit more firmly, "Hey, you've got to clean your land up a little bit better." I mean, they're seeing, that vision, again, cleaning the Rubbermaid Building up, you know, setting your things up, that first impression, I can't tell you how, when you walk into a building the first time, you look at that building, you go, "Oh, my gosh, what do I have to do? How much do I have to spend?" I mean, it's tough. That's a tough, that's a tough, really, that's a tough one for everybody to have to deal with. When you go into a new building, man, it's just like, "How much do I have to pay?" That's what it is. I mean, how much?
It's like when you're buying a house. You look at it, you're like, "Ooh."
I understand. Well, there's not a lot of emotion in business deals with the buildings.
But money.
But I mean, it can be. It can be. You want to take that one out of it if you can and know that you've got, you've got all of those ducks in a row.
Any other questions?
If there are no other questions, we're going to move on to Larry Ortega. Thank you, Dawn. No, no, that's great. Thank you, Dawn. Thank you.
We've been waiting to hear from you, so that's fine.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we have Larry Ortega next. He's Executive Vice President and has 30 years of industry experience. And he specializes in the sale and leasing of retail properties and represents regional and national retail tenants. His team has a wealth of experience in retail site selection, development, and redevelopment. And I got to learn a little bit about Larry personally before this event, that he's a fine arts degree, is an artist as well, so very multi-talented. But Larry?
Well, thank you for having me here. I've got a long history with Goodyear and real estate in Arizona. I moved here from Hawaii, having grown up in Newport Beach area. And moved here in 1980, and growing up in Orange County and living in Hawaii, everything was so expensive. I get to Arizona, and someone told me I can buy a piece of farmland for $900 an acre, and I could put 10% down and get payment, annual payments. Well, I went into the real estate business then, so. So I'm a little bit different, that a lot of my business practice now has been centered around downtown Phoenix, and that's a six-mile, six-square-mile block area. And the older and the uglier the building, the more we like it. So that's actually a little bit contrary. I'm selling buildings that are built in 1910. And I thought, you know, my mantra for downtown Phoenix is food, fashion, music, and art. And I've been able to, you know, bring lots of new restaurants. The fashion has not been as much. The art and the music, I'm working on a new live music venue downtown. So when I was listening to Tyler and to Dawn speak, and they really, there was something that resonated. And that was, you know, Goodyear's search for its identity. What will it be known for? I was involved with the very first commercial development on Mill Avenue in Tempe. And, you know, we've seen what, you know, Tempe is a college town, and it's grown up that way. And that's the reputation. Chandler, when I tour with a retailer, you know, where do they want to be? And they look at Chandler with all those very rich, you know, manufacturing jobs and that disposable income. And so, you know, when we bring in a company into Arizona, they want a plan for, "We want to do 40 stores," or "We're Lowe's and we want to do 22 stores," or "CVS," or whatever. You know, they want a plan, and they want a way to achieve their plan. And they always have tier one, tier two, and tier three sites. Tier one, those are immediate needs. Tier two, let's stay close to them. And tier three is, you know, let's keep them on the radar. But, so, you know, where is Goodyear now? What I wanted to say was that I was involved with SunCorps early on when they were buying property here, was involved with most of the shopping centers here. And, you know, so I've seen the evolution of Goodyear. It used, my son has been in the business about 13 years now. And about five years ago, right before the recession, or maybe right at the beginning of the recession, he asked me, "Hey, Dad, what should I do? You know, I'm, you know, I'm a lot younger. I've got a lot more miles left than you." I think that's what he said, something like that. And I said, "You know what? If I was, if I was a young man again, I'd be out in the West Valley." I believe in the West Valley, and I've done business all over the state. But you do need to search for an identity and something that, like what Dawn was talking about, getting a piece of property that is entitled, that gives you a competitive edge. Right before the recession, it was interesting is that the real estate, the VP of Real Estate for Bass Pro called me up. He goes, "Hey, I got a new job and I'm doing, you know, I want to do a tour of Phoenix, and, you know, where could we do another Bass Pro shop?" Well, we ended up here in Goodyear, Glendale and Goodyear, and there were compelling reasons to be in either location. But we hit a recession, and, you know, they decided not to come. Another entertainment-type of retailer, we had received an offer at Bullard and McDowell, SunCorps, the large piece there. And I just pulled another scab off my arm, so. But it was for a great entertainment use called the Great Wolf Lodge, which I don't know if you're familiar with there in California. New one at Disneyland, new one at Knott's Berry Farm. And it's an all-suites hotel, totally enclosed. And it's, I have, since 1980, I've been trying to bring Six Flags here or some type of entertainment venue into Phoenix. I still got a few more years, but I'm in the ninth inning, so. But, you know, that is exactly what, you know, I think that the city of Goodyear could focus in on as being, you know, as focusing in on that entertainment, because you have the land. Can you be south of the freeway? Absolutely. Can you be north of the freeway? Absolutely. With Bass Pro, we were really circling around the 303 and Indian School area. So, you know, as far as things that are in play right now, everybody's been waiting for the mall, which will probably be the next mall, maybe even built in the United States. Malls are not being, there are very few malls being developed. There are very few projects over a million square feet being developed because the anchor tenants, whether it's a grocery store or, I mean, I talked with Vestar, who's done most of the power centers. A new power center will be not a million square feet, but it'll be 400,000 to 500,000 square feet. That's the new normal. Now, we're waiting for Mace Rich to announce the mall. Again, we'll have ICSC in a couple of months, and we'll get to take the temperature of the department stores. And, you know, some of them have been contracting, so, you know, hopefully we'll have another good sign there. But there's little pieces being built. Finally, the theater is being built. And that's a boon. That's part of that entertainment complex as well. So there was a layoff at Mace Rich that they laid off a number of their leasing specialists in the company. And, you know, that looked like it could potentially put a damper on what they're doing. But I was reassured. I have a restaurant company that is looking to come into Goodyear. And we had, you know, sent in a letter of intent, and now with the layoff, I'm scratching my head going, you know, "Is this going to happen?" But we were reassured today that, you know, things are going to be moving on, and, you know, we'll receive our counter offer. And so that's good news there. The southeast corner of Bullard and McDowell that is in escrow with a mixed-use project, I'd sold the Drury Hotel. We've been waiting for that to open. And, you know, I think with a few little things, a few more things happening, more residential development and more jobs, all that, you know, that builds on that momentum. You know, again, Nordstrom's will be opening up next week in a tent over here, so. No, that's not true. You know, I do represent Trader Joe's, and I've been asked, you know, the city of Prescott did a survey in the city, and the most, the retailer that had the most responses was Trader Joe's.
Yeah.
They put me on a helicopter with the real estate manager. We did a tour. You know, I was very excited. But it took a number of years before they finally, they finally happened. I presented them a site in, Trader Joe's, a site in downtown Phoenix, which needs a grocery store. And their comment was, we're opening up stores in Washington DC, we're opening up stores in, in, in New York. And it's unbelievable, the sales. So, doing another store in Arizona, that's just, you know, not, not, you know, not our cup of tea. Nor other retailers that I represent, Guitar Center and Golfsmith and some of the specialty retailers. They're all starting though to start, you know, everybody's starting to warm up. Even, even clients that I've had for twenty-five years, kinder care learning centers. They, I haven't done a store for them in, in five or six, or a school for them five or six years, but they were in town two weeks ago. Goodyear has a lot to offer. And what the, what the rest, what the retailers want, first of all, is that the quality population, the, the income. And, and, and the co-tenancy as well. So, but I think, I think the, the small steps that Goodyear is taking, you know, one retailer coming in. I mean, I remember when we did the PF Chang's and the Red Robin, and then the world collapsed and, you know, they're, they're still there. You know, we hope to bring some other tenants around there that, you know, things like that will, will, will help. I was mentioning, I couldn't remember the name of my client, I felt bad. Great Hearts Academy, I think is a wonderful school. It's a, it's a great school. And things like that help me as a broker explain the dynamics of, of Bullard and McDowell. And so, all those little things, you know, help create the bigger thing. And so, Goodyear's search for its identity, just like we were all saying, is that, you know, really, people want to know what Goodyear is. I mean, Scottsdale, we know what that is. You know, Chandler has got its own, its own branding, Tempe as well. What is Goodyear's brand? What, what is, Georgia, what is Goodyear's branding? What, what do you stand? What does, when people say Goodyear, what do they remember?
Quality of life.
I'm sorry?
Quality of life.
Okay.
If you have any comments for people that are living here, I think that's the number one, quality of life. But I've been in a number of branding meetings since I was on council in two thousand and five. We've done it a couple of times. It's really tough. When we were doing the city center, we were going to build a city center, that's when we really started looking at trying to brand ourselves for that. And then that went away. And so, it's, it's been very difficult. We don't have any big feature. At one time, there was a company that came that would build a beach and, and surfboarding. It was a huge, huge, and they were talking about, oh yeah, that was when Paula was here. And that was one of the big projects. And, and I don't know what happened, I'm sure, one thing for us is cost. The same way with Bass's, we were, we were on, we were on that. But it was the total amount at the end, the eighty, what was it? It was quite a bit of incentive for our city and we just, oh, I won't say it out loud, but it was a lot.
Well, it is a lot. Which is not disclosed, by the way.
So, so, you know, there are times when we could have turned the corner and we just haven't had the financial wherewithal to do it. And I think had we not had the downturn, during the downturn, we gave up a lot in order to make it through it. But then economic development did better than most of the cities. We filled up all the buildings when the downturn came. It was, it was amazing during that time, where other people weren't getting businesses, we did, so.
Well, I'll, I'll just give you an observation, because I go all over the valley and I, I look, I, I observe shopping centers. And I got off on Dice Art and instead of going north, which I've always done, and, you know, I went south. And your shopping centers are full. I mean, they're, even the, the marginal or the B or C shop, there are tenants in there. I, I can take you to parts of Gilbert that nobody goes to, or parts of Chandler, or every other city. And so, I was, I was pleasantly surprised that even that small business, whether it's a carniceria or it's a nail salon or whatever, you have a lot of them, you, you can brag about that. That, that actually tells me a lot about your community, you know, that you have, you know, you, that you have not only the better part working, but you also have other parts working. And so, I was, I was really, I, I don't have any charts, so, so, but I can tell you that from my experience in retail of about forty years, that, you know, you, you're healthy. There's a lot of health in here. And what you do need is, you know, that, that next really cool project that could be landed. And, and I think that it could be, you know, maybe it is in that entertainment arena. Maybe it's in an education. I sold ASU, their first campus in downtown Phoenix in nineteen ninety-one. Go to downtown Phoenix now and see what's happened. I mean, now I'm hated because I brought too many people there, there are no parking spaces. So, you know, it's, it's, but, you know, Goodyear, and like I said to my son, and, and what Goodyear has, it's got great freeway exposure and it's got plenty of land. Tempe doesn't have any more land. Scottsdale is, you know, you got to go north of the, the one oh one and there's no zoning.
I thought that was true about Phoenix, but now you're going up. So, you're going upward in Phoenix now. So, the frustration, when you see that, you think, I finally thought, oh, we're going to be there now. Well, now you go down and everybody's going up. So, so that's, you know, it's frustrating.
Georgia, you're exactly right. In, in the six square miles of downtown, there are five thousand apartments going up. I sold a historic building at Central Avenue and McKinley, thirty-four thousand square foot lot. We're doing three hundred and ten units above the building, nineteen stories. And so-
They have empty, they have old, old buildings. And that's what smaller restaurants, they can't afford the square footage in a brand-new shopping center. You know, and so they're, they're, they're good, they're good restaurants, they're the ones that everybody's dying to have here. They don't want to come because it goes by square feet of how, you know, what they can, and so we don't, you know, there's another, a little step to climb.
Yeah, you know what, though? You know, I'm, I'm real proud, I, I love downtown Phoenix of, I, hey, I've done a lot of business out in the West Valley. But, you know, again, part of that identity, you know, we had the McDowell Mountain Music Festival, has always been at McDowell Mountain Park and all that. They moved to downtown Phoenix. Now, that's another opportunity for, for the community to come together with some type of event. I mean, Chandler's got an ostrich festival. You know, other cities have got music festivals and all that. What, what can you do-
I think we're doing a good job in that area. We're moving our, the arts in our area. We're doing a great number of those things. So, yes.
I'd also point out that you, you've got some really important people in town that have invested in the West Valley, whether it's Jerry Colangelo. It just was one example. But there's a lot of, you know, influential people that see a vision in the West Valley because they wouldn't be, you know, own the land.
No, we're not discouraged, we're just-
It's just a matter of-
It's a matter, you, you work very hard at everything and you wait and you think it's coming and you think it's coming. And so you get over anxious, that's all. We understand that it takes density and we understand that we have a lot of raw dirt in Goodyear. We're only eleven percent developed. So, we know realistically that it takes time to develop this.
So, Larry mentioned a good thing. I mean, from an office standpoint, you know, as you get better education out here, as you get more population, as all the home, home building, that's all going to help everything. And the fact is that Goodyear's of the West Valley cities is one of the closer ones to Phoenix. So, this would be a different conversation if you're talking about Surprise or North Peoria. I mean, they have some benefits and disadvantages as well, but I think Goodyear, for where you are, is a very good location.
Ideal location. Joe, did you have something?
Yeah, I just, you're talking to my heart. My, my, my vision is a gathering place here at the city where we bring entertainment, we bring restaurants, we bring retail. I think your biggest challenge, and you're in the business, and tell me if I'm off a little bit, but people come here and they see a seventy thousand population. But we have demographics that pull more than seventy thousand. We have maybe four hundred, five hundred thousand, because we've got people shopping here from Buckeye, Surprise, Glendale, Avondale, et cetera, et cetera. And we have some businesses that have come here that are number one in the state, very popular restaurant. It's number one in the state. And I think our, our biggest challenge is convincing those retailers and those entertainment venues, the disposable income, I would compare to Scottsdale of, of this community, you know. And, and the problem is comparing, is trying to get them to see that, because they see this little community with seventy thousand, until they come and they locate here. Once they locate here, you know, they're going great guns and we've got a few. And again, for a city, our size to be number one to have a restaurant, and I think the manager knows what I'm talking about, is number one in the state, which you would never expect that for a city if you look at the demographics of seventy thousand. So, I don't know how we get there. The mall, for example, with Matrix. I agree, malls are challenging, but thinking outside the box, we've got to figure out a way to build something that draws people to the mall. Shopping, you can do that on a computer. So, you got to come up with an idea that gets people inside that area, that's more than just shopping, that draws them while they're doing other business, they take care of their shopping. So, when they look at that, and you've been in this business for, for a lot of years, is to try to think outside the box when you're coming about these big, huge malls or these, these strip centers or whatever you want to call them, is to get them there. They're the ones that are succeeding, at least my research tells me, not the ones that are traditional box retail. You know, big box at one end, one big box at another end, and stuff in the filler. Those are the ones that are having issues because, like I say, you can, you can go on the internet and buy anything you pretty much want.
Well, yeah, the good news is they still need brick and mortar stores or I'd be out of business. But you, Joe, you're exactly right. But what, what the, what the shopping centers are, you know, finding out in a big way, is you, you can't eat on the internet. So, there's that, that drive to create, you know, more, more restaurants within, within the mall areas. And, and even like, look at Metro Center. I mean, that thing is becoming a, you know, a magnet for, for schooling, for, we've got the light rail going to it. So, it's going to completely change. There'll be some retail in it, but maybe, I mean, really that gathering place that you're discussing, Joe, that should be, you know, at Bullard and McDowell, Pebble Creek and McDowell, the, you know, that mall will, will bring a richness. And, Joe, I, you know, when, when you talk about high-volume, you know, restaurants and stores, yes, I've opened a number of them here. They haven't been maybe number one in the state, but this is a, a trade area for a lot of different restaurants. But what, I think what a lot of people are looking for is how can we get that, that, that local restaurant that can come, the, the Postinos or the, you know, that, that- Well, you know what? You know, that you got Oregano's here, that, that makes a statement, because people's heads turned and said, Oregano's over there. Okay, there's something, and that store, it's on. It's, it's on. And so is Olive Garden, it's on. So, you know, there, there is horsepower here. And you're right, Joe, as a retail broker, someone sends me some, some study that they received from, you know, some academic area or some they hired and, you know, looking for leakage and all this and all that. When I get in the car and I'm with a client, you know what they want to know? Well, I'm with a restaurant client, how much is that Applebee's doing? How much is that, that other restaurant? They, so, it's incumbent upon us as brokers to know those, I know the numbers, you know, I have to know the numbers. And, you know, if you need help in with restaurant numbers, I was telling Michelle that I did a study for the city of Phoenix for the downtown area. There's, there's a hundred and seventy-two restaurants in that six square mile area. There's eighteen thousand, six hundred and four seats there. There's so many Chinese, there's so many Mexican, there's so many this, 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 and this. Well, this category is missing, this one's underrepresented. This, I think when you, when you really start quantifying what you already have, then you'll see what you need. But again, that, that identity, you're going to, you're, it's going to happen. You know, Georgia, you're, you're right. It's not if, it's when. I told that to my son, so, you know, he's, it's got to be true. And, but, you know, to accelerate that, you know, the idea that, that Dawn proffered, you know, when you get manufacturing job, that's, that's, you know, there's a lot of manufacturing jobs in Chandler, wouldn't you say? I mean, that's, and, you know, we all, we're all hoping that we get more manufacturing jobs. But when you, when you become even, even having that kind of vision, that, that's, you know, in your, in your, becomes your, your DNA at this level, it's, you know, the, the people can, people can feel it. People can feel it when they're getting a permit, that they're welcome, that they, you know, that you're rolling out the red carpet. There are cities that, I mean, it's so difficult to develop, and I'm from California and I've developed in California, that's why I'm here, so. But, you know, Goodyear, hey, you've got, your way ahead in a lot of areas is that you've got plentiful of land, great transportation, you've got a workforce. It, it is a matter of not, not if, but when. But the other, the, the little ideas, those little stepping stones, whether it's getting Oregano's to come in here, because when Oregano comes in here, someone else in that genre is looking. All those little steps, you know, one day you're just going to turn around and the gathering place is going to be there, the mall will be built there. And, and the city coffers will get healthier and healthier. So, it's, if anything that I would, you know, make a recommendation is, is to, you know, seek out that identity. And I know you guys have been very proactive. I've always had calls from, from Goodyear, from someone, hey, we just want to know, what about, what do you think about this, about that? How can we attract this retailer or that retailer? And, and I will tell you that Goodyear is probably one of the better, if not the best, city to do that. They've always reached out. There have been some cities that, you know, you know, they're not that way any, any longer. But, you know, that, that, that attitude that you guys are reaching out and they're really trying to look for, for answers, I mean, that's proactive. And again, you know, the, the, the other, the small, not, I don't think it's a small idea, I think it's a great idea that giving you guys that competitive advantage to do something. Because retailers, all they want to do is, you know, how many, where are our customers at? How many are there? Where do they live? And where do they shop? That's, you know, so, I have to have someone like this that, you know, is creating that space, that is creating jobs and that the, the home builders that are starting to build, you remember, we, we led the nation in home, it was, we couldn't even keep up with it, especially in, in Goodyear. It was like, one day was, you know, ten houses in this one little subdivision and then it was sold out. So, you know, those, those days are, are probably not going to happen again for a little while. But, you know, Goodyear has got a great future because it has, it has room to grow. Other cities, we have to go up, which isn't too bad either.
Jerry?
And I, I want to make a comment on one thing you said about Phoenix. I've worked in downtown Phoenix for about twenty-five years. So, I've seen the progression of places that you wouldn't want to go in tonight, to now that are the cute, cute little chic restaurants and how they during this time, I think, were searching for their identity in downtown. And this is the cityscape, where they have the, the restaurants, like the Fractured Prune and Grab a Green all together. They're like little, small restaurants in one space. So, I, I like the kitschy ideas if we could somehow, that's what I'd like to see come here. The other thing you mentioned, and Georgia mentioned it too, about, you know, a Six Flags, a large, some sort of destination. Because I, I don't know if you know, we have land all the way to Mobile. I mean, we've got the space for something to think outside that box, you know? And, and I'd like us to think outside the box. I don't know if that's something that's viable in the near future.
Well, ten years ago, I was touring with, you know, entertainment uses that were very interested in Goodyear. And for a lot of the same reasons, you know, it's close to LA, it's close to Mexico, it's close, close enough to downtown Phoenix. So, if they look here once before, you know, it was just a timing, it was a timing issue. And so I think that there's, you know, and there's, there's a lot of different entertainment uses that are all looking for money that, you know, and hoping the cities would, you know, come up with money. That just doesn't happen any longer. So, but, you know, a, a, you know, everybody wants, if you're a big user, you want a compelling reason to come here. You know, if you're Disneyland in Orlando, you got a special deal and, and continue to get special deals, so. But, you know, if anywhere, there could be a large entertainment venue like a, like that Surf thing, which I wish was here already. So, you know, this, you guys are in play, Goodyear's in play, so.
And then my other question was, we have, I don't know if you've been up to Australia, it's like a, a micro-community up there, I want to say.
Sold thousands of acres down there.
Yes. Could you address the retail there? Because I know there's a lot of people who are going to-
Because I know there's a lot of people are going to be watching this, and I get asked literally daily about, why don't we have a sit-down, a small sit-down restaurant? Why don't we have a Trader Joe's? And I'd like to hear it from the expert.
Well, when the property was sold a few years ago, they invited me to, you know, look at their project, Safeway was already there. And I had to make an assessment, you know, of my business time and all that, and I chose not to do it for a lot of the reasons. There's just not enough momentum. You know, I think a good local restaurant, if they, I mean, first of all, it's a risky business. Second of all, you know, now you're going into a small community, you know, even in small communities, and I lived on the peninsula in Newport Beach, you know, it's a beautiful area, but I never felt, you know, I felt like I had to get off the peninsula to go to a restaurant that was any good. And so, you know, the people will, it's, especially in the restaurant business, I mean, that's just a tough business and there's just not enough, you know, people, there's just not enough people there yet, so.
That helps. I get asked that question a lot, so I just wanted your.
And it's such a beautiful community. I mean, it is, it's as pretty as Scottsdale, so, but not enough people yet, so.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. This was just wonderful.
Well, thank you all.
Yes, and.
Thank you. Just to close it out, I think we said a lot of really good points, and I think, you know, just to close it out, really Larry, Don, and Tyler talking about the need for density and for jobs, this all fits together. So the need for density in terms of housing, the need for major employment leading to the retail and entertainment users. So I just wanted to say thank you for that and part of our development continuum and our mini-series, and the next one will be April 4th.
Cool, great.
Yeah, but thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Round of applause. Yeah. Thanks. Thank you. Applause. Okay. Okay. Yeah, I just was notified Bill will not be calling in, so. All right, we're now down where we'll be getting a presentation from Human Resources Director Lyman Lockett to present, provide us, the council, with the feedback and update and the recommendations for compensation and benefits for the upcoming plan year. Hello?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to give you an update on our healthcare insurance renewal and our compensation update and recommendations that we'll present this evening. Before I get into the presentation, there are a few folks that I think are in the audience. Not sure how many of our insurance committee members we may have. I don't see a lot. But I do want to, and I'll spend a little bit more time acknowledging them, even though they're not here, they've done a lot of work, and we have tasked a lot of things of them through this plan year. We also have a few of our HR staff members here. And last but not least, we have our insurance broker, Rick Shuckerow from the Levitt Group, and he'll be here to answer any questions that you may have. There are a number of things that we'll talk about this evening. And on the agenda, we have activity leading up to our insurance renewal, our medical plan renewal, and the proposed plan designs that we'll present to you this evening, cost containment strategies, other benefits and compensation.
Will there be a point for discussion or we wait till the end on this?
I'm going to leave it up to you. How is it?
What I'll do is, since we have them segmented, I'll stop and allow questions at the end of the benefits, and then we'll move to compensation if that works for everyone.
All right, let's do that.
There are a number of things that have been leading up to where we're at today. One of the areas that I want to focus on are cost containment strategies. One thing that hasn't changed from a healthcare standpoint is that costs continue to rise and we continue to try and strategize around how we can contain our cost. If you'll recall, last year in our Cigna contract, we adopted a 50%, what we call a 50% dividend eligible option. And essentially what that is, is if we have surplus left over after expenses, we're eligible to get 50% of that back from Cigna. So it's kind of a toe in the water into self-funding, if you will. No, you know, no liability on our end, so we can't lose, we can only gain. So if there are no surpluses, we're not owing Cigna any more money. But it was a step in the right direction. Once we close out the plan year this year, we'll see what we might get back. We're not anticipating anything in the first year, but we'll know what those numbers are. And there are some surpluses that they'll build in for run-out claims. But it is a step from a cost containment perspective that we've moved forward with. The other thing that we did throughout the year is we conducted an impact study of the Cadillac tax. And the Cadillac tax was pushed off to 2020, and I think it's important that we continue to watch that. Much of what we're doing from a cost containment perspective keeps in mind the potential impact of the Cadillac tax. We have also, at least at this point, begun conversations with a small group to talk about a task force to provide counsel with information about self-funding. So we've hit some trigger points that I'll talk about a little bit later on that really bring that issue forward. And it is an issue that we really need to be thinking about on the long-term from a cost containment perspective. We've assessed our current plan design and tried to draw some distinctions for our employees, looking at the three plans that we have. Is there a distinction between those plans that meet the employees' choice options? So it's one of the things that we've looked at as we started assessing our plans. One of the other things that we've done is obviously completed our negotiations with Cigna, and we've got some good news here that I'll share with you in a moment. And lastly, we have continued to integrate our wellness in with all the other things that we're doing. One of the main things that we've done is we've taken our biometric screening and begin to really dissect that information, and we're moving to more of an outcome-based approach. So if we look at our top areas, muscular skeletal, stress, weight, and high blood pressure, those are the top four, and those are areas that we are focusing our wellness efforts on. With the biometric screening, it gives us some rich data in terms of numbers within the organization, and we can look from year to year to see if we're actually making impact in those areas. So that becomes more of an outcome-based approach. Now, getting into the medical renewal, just a quick refresher, we have the three plans. We have our HMO, we have the two HSA plans. The right graph there shows our current distribution in the plans. Most of our employees are in the HMO plan, we've got 61% there. And then the next highest category would be our HSA $1,300 deductible plan where we have 29%. And then what we call our high-high deductible, where we have an individual $2,400 deductible, and we have 10% of our employees in that plan. The plans, from our perspective, as I mentioned earlier, in going out to our employees to talk about options, we do have some similarities between the plans, and we'll continue to work on creating differentiation for our employees between each of the plans. Renewal overview. So our renewal this year is based on a loss ratio of 84.2. Last year, it was based on a loss ratio of around 96%. So that's come down considerably. Our target with Cigna was 83%. We are looking at a status quo renewal, so the plan design that I just showed would be the same as what we would have going forward. We would keep our 50% dividend eligible plan, and that would also include the 50% wellness fund that we currently get from Cigna. We would experience a 3.6% increase in our EAP program, and that essentially amounts of $700 annually. So not a lot of money, but one thing that's important about our EAP system is we are utilizing that program at a higher rate than most organizations, so that's a good thing. We promote it, and it offers a wealth of things, both from a healthcare perspective as well as other things, employees needing services, legal services, employees just needing any kind of service for that matter. It provides employees with all kinds of alternatives. So again, looking at our plan design, the plan design would stay the same as you see here, and our increase is essentially zero. So we've got a rate pass this year. We worked very hard for that rate pass. Our broker worked with Cigna, we've been working with Cigna throughout the year, and I think we've leveraged a number of things to get here. One, our loss ratios, and I'll show you in a moment where we're trending. I'm always cautious to get too excited about those things because you never know when something might pop up. But our wellness program, Cigna is in tune to what we're doing from a wellness perspective, and they are partnering with us on the things that we're doing. So a lot of where we're at today is built around a partnership with them and an understanding of what we're trying to do to contain our cost. So what this means, and as I talk about a rate pass or a 0% increase, there are going to be some changes, and one of the things that we needed to do was to ensure that our plans are relatively priced. So there's going to be some adjustments to the plans, but the overall dollar increase is still 0%. What you see here in the first column here is the status quo increase. So if we were just to leave everything the same, this would be the employee per pay-period contribution. When we make the relative adjustment, you're going to find that, for example, here for our Cigna HMO employee-only, the cost is going to go up slightly. It's going to go from $22.74 a pay period up to $23.91 a pay period. So a slight increase, and you can see the increase throughout the HMO plan. And that's essentially reflective of the fact that our HMO plan is costing us more than the premiums we were collecting. So a relative adjustment there. And then if you work your way down to our HSA plans, we're finding the opposite here. So for an employee-only, status quo again would be $25.14 per pay period. The relative adjustment is going to come down to $23.54. So some of our employees will see a reduction in their premiums, while others that are there in the CMG HMO are going to see a slight cost increase. And then with our high-high deductible, you're also seeing a decrease there.
That's a good point to ask for questions for them.
Sure.
All right. Anybody have any questions at this point? No? Joe? Go ahead.
No, I think you answered it. Just for clarification, the difference is, and I would suspect you're going to be explaining this to the employees as this unveils, is it's how you're allocating the cost because some of the plans, their costs actually went up a little bit versus some of the other. So the overall cost to the city and to the employees zeros out, but some go up a little, some go down again based on that pot of money that's costing a little more depending on the plan. Is that an accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. And you will be explaining to them why there's a little increase or a decrease, and they'll still have the option to change if they so choose.
That is correct, Councilmember Pazillo. And one of the things that we tasked the insurance committee with this year is to begin to take this information out. So they have already taken this information out and gotten feedback from employees. We will also circle back during our roadshows and talk about this in great detail so that employees know what these impacts are going to be.
Joanne?
When you were speaking of self-funding, is that the same or is it different when Avondale, for example? I know that the last, we've spoken a year ago and maybe a couple of years before that about that insurance pool of, is that still considered self-funding when it's all these entities together in this insurance pool? Is that what you're talking about that you're investigating? Or is that, so why are we not looking at that again, I guess is my question?
So Avondale, we looked at Avondale last year.
It's like 13 cities together, isn't it? Or something large?
Um.
Not that big. I don't remember.
At the time, they had four cities.
Oh, that was it?
Yeah.
Okay.
However, they've added, they have added at least one more than I'm aware of. And essentially, it is a trust and a conglomeration of cities that have come together. We looked at it. One of the major difficulties we had with moving to that is that we would have to really diminish our benefits in order, and there's also controls there. We lose control, we become a voice of one amongst cities in many cases that are much smaller than us, so we didn't feel like we had the controls that were necessary, and we had greater flexibility by looking at self-funding. That is a self-funded option within that group.
It's just a different type.
But it's a different type.
Thank you.
And that's all, we never leave that from our radar screen. So if ever we would find someone out there that might be a good match for us to join in a consortium, that's certainly something we would consider.
Well, for example, I mean, I know that the hospital itself, Abrazo, has their own self-funding mechanism, and I didn't know how.
I'll talk a little bit more about self-funding here in a moment.
Okay.
And give you a few comparisons as well, and that might answer some of the other questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, Joe? Sorry.
You're going to explore self-funding a little more detail, right?
Yes.
Never mind, I'll hold on.
Okay.
So as we get into cost containment strategies, the three that I want to talk about today are a wellness clinic, telemedicine, which is something that we're proposing this year, and certainly would like to get council's feedback and direction on that, and then, of course, self-funding and essentially putting together a self-funding task force. So we'll get into that in a little bit more detail. First off, the wellness clinic. Just want to provide a little bit of background on what's happening in the wellness clinic. Last year, we conducted 2,168 provider visits through the wellness clinic. These are visits for employees and their spouses and dependents of all kind. And one of the things that the clinic does is they chart visits based on the services that are provided, just like you would at a medical provider. So we're able to gauge those costs. We also conducted 217 occupational medicine visits. So employee injuries, follow-up, return to work, those kinds of things. And then also, we are moving to some areas of prevention there that I'll talk about. That occupational medicine element of it is an area where, in many cases, what we run through the clinic are direct cost savings back to the city. We would otherwise be spending that money at another provider. So we, you know, we have opportunities there. Our clinic's open 28 hours a week, so some accidents occur outside of the clinic hours and they're going off to a next care or another place. So when we bring them to the clinic, that's direct savings to the city. The value of that care, when we look at those codes that they put in for the provider visits is $374,170. So that's a value of that segment. We also have the value of the occupational medicine services, and that's $32,000. And that goes up against the annual cost of operating the clinic of about $302,000. The significance of this cost containment measure is. The significance of this cost containment measure is all of these dollars don't hit our Cigna plan. So, as much as we can provide services through the clinic, we're bringing down those loss ratios to keep our premiums low. We are working on providing some new services on the occupational health side, bringing in our AC post pre-employment physicals that we currently pay $450 per physical. So, those will be run through the clinic. We also have a hearing conservation program, so audiograms that we would currently run down to Banner. Our employees would have to go down to Banner. They don't have a scheduling system. They sit, they wait, they get in when they get in, and then they have to drive all the way back. So, a lot of loss of productivity there, and this service will pay for itself in one year. And then the last one that we're looking at is kind of a return to work exam, if you will, to make sure that when employees are released to work, they're actually ready to work. Now, as we work our way into self-funding, one of the areas I think that's important and also a trigger point for us is looking at our medical loss ratios. And I don't necessarily want to call this a trend. One of the things that we're always up against are our high-dollar claims. 5% of our claims generate 80% of our expenses. So, you never know when you're going to get a high claim. So, I think one of the things, though, that is happening within the city, and I credit this to all of our employees, I credit it to our insurance committee. I do believe that some of this is due to our employees becoming smarter consumers of healthcare, being more conscious of how they use healthcare. And I think the things that we're doing from a wellness program are certainly having impact on this. Once we get into this neighborhood of 80% loss ratio, it's certainly time to begin to talk about self-funding. And that's where we're at today. That's why we are beginning the discussions and recommending that we put together this task force. We can also go back and look at our medical renewal rates. And this is really just a snapshot of our renewal rates. And I think what's significant here, if you look at Goodyear, I think we would look at ourselves and say that we're pretty volatile in terms of where we've been and where we potentially might see in the future without appropriate cost containment measures. Many of these benchmark cities that we have that are self-funded are mature self-funded plans, so they built up reserves. And when they have bad years, we know that they can offset those through the reserves that they built up. So, they have a more flat cost curve than what we have. Ours is unfortunately a little bit more jagged and unexpected. So, what we're trying to do is to really level our cost curve. So, when we talk about self-funding, it's not an immediate fix, but it is a long-term strategy that we feel will help us. So, what is a self-funding task force? Essentially, it's a team made up of the finance director, HR director, our insurance broker, legal, and any other outside experts that we feel we need to bring in, and there will be others. This would be a team that would begin to explore a recommendation and build a recommendation and also provide counsel with information and insight into what is entailed, bring forth the considerations that you need to make as a council to move forward with a self-funding plan. Our target would be to have a recommendation put together to move forward with self-funding next year. So, there's a lot of work that's involved, including looking at reserve levels. How do we build our reserves? What are the reserve levels that we need? What are the strategies that we need in place to maintain and to build those appropriate reserve levels? Reinsurance. We would both need to procure reinsurance services and also set those limits appropriately. Third-party administrators to actually handle our claims. So, there's a number of things that would have to happen, including putting in the controls and fiduciary responsibilities. One of the things that I think is key with a self-funded plan is to build, we will have to build our own plan. One of the things that's also beneficial about being self-funded, as we reflect back on the Cadillac tax, is that being self-funded gives us more latitude to adjust our plan to offset some of the potential impacts of the Cadillac tax. So, gives us more latitude with our plan design and other aspects of controlling expenses. We'd also need to talk about trust board responsibilities and develop a procurement timeline to procure all those services. So, this is what the task force would bring forth.
Any questions? Joe?
I think you covered some of it, but some of my concerns on any self-funding is as you move forward, the pluses and minuses when it comes to insuring high-dollar claims. You know, what does that break even? Where if you get a large claim, that you've got insurance to cover that instead of tapping into the reserves? What type of reserves do you need to set up to move the thing forward? Because you know there's a lot of fluctuations. I mean, one day we could have 100% and then 105%, then next thing you know, we have 70%. So, there's fluctuation. So, you look at all those alternatives when you set that up. What are legal exposure, you know, would be, you know, as far as that is concerned? And not only that, when you set up your administrator, when you're administering this cost, typically we have to go through an insurance company. And unfortunately, some times ago, that's not something that's covered or is something that's covered. I would assume what our administrator would, would, all of that would go through, whether it's in the plan? Would there be a process of that employee to appeal that particular decision? And who would it go through? Because typically, you have, you're fighting with the insurance company. Now, we're fighting with the city. So, all of those things, I'm hoping as you work through that you've got all of those things. And I just listed a few off the top of my head, and I'm sure you've got others. But all of those pieces are well thought out and covered when you come back with a recommendation to the city council.
Yes. I fully agree. Mayor, Councilmember Pazillo, I think that was a 13-part question. But nonetheless, great questions, and I think the task force would be exploring all of those, including how we handle appeals. So, when we draw up our plan design, it would include all of those things, and we would also be assigning those responsibilities to our third-party administrator. But I think the key point that you really talked about is this fluctuation in setting both our aggregate claim and our stop-loss claim levels. Those are key points. And going back and looking at our history from a financial perspective so that we know going in what that liability might be is critical in ultimately making a decision. So, the numbers have to work. The numbers absolutely have to work for us to move in this direction. And we have to have startup, we have to have reserves built up because we know claims are coming, so.
Wally?
Can you tell me how many folks are actually enrolled in our...
In our plans?
In our plans.
We have 400, I'm shooting off the top of my head, 437, I want to say, but if I can get back to this chart here.
432, and we have 500 and something employees?
Correct.
Okay. On your wellness clinic slide, you said you conducted 217 occupational medicine visits? And that's the employee injuries?
217.
Yeah.
And that's employee injuries. That's correct.
Okay. Are you finding that the proactive approach that we are supposedly taking as a city has cut down on some of the accidents that occur at work?
Yes, I would say absolutely. And I think that one of the things that we're finding is that we have to continue to be diligent, and we have to continue to, and I think one significant point as we talk about coupling wellness with the occupational health, that's one of the things that we have the wellness coordinator going out and doing is now getting into departments and talking about wellness, both from an individual perspective but also from a work perspective. So, what are the things that we're doing from a wellness perspective to make sure employees are safe in their workplace? It's something that we focus a lot on, and I think it has had a great impact, positive impact, on the city.
Well, that's good because we want a positive impact, and we know that our safety officer is always making sure that we do things safely, but there's still accidents happen. So, on your, you said that you're bringing some in-house appointments that we normally would send folks out?
Anytime the clinic is open and there's an injury, the clinic is the first place that we will send them.
Well, but I mean, for, you know, like, we need a work appointment to just check us over and make sure we're not, you know, our drug testing or whatever we do. Can we do all of that in-house?
Drug testing, all of our drug testing, pre-employment drug testing is done in-house.
Because that saves a lot of money.
That's also part of the occupational medicine bucket there that we have.
Okay. Is there anything else we could bring in-house that would save money?
There are, there are things that we're looking at that we can bring in-house. And I'll talk about, I'll talk about telemedicine. It doesn't necessarily get into the occupational health side, but there are things that we could look at bringing in-house. As I mentioned, return to work. I mentioned the hearing conservation program, which is an OSHA-required program that will save a lot of money bringing that in-house. We're constantly looking at things that we can bring in. One of the things that we want to bring in also is just agility testing. So, when we talk about return to work, physical, we're also talking about agility testing and physical demand testing. Are you really capable of lifting 25 pounds? Or should you still be on light duty capacity in some regard? So, that testing right now is relied upon outside the city. We want to bring that in-house because we have an interest in making sure that our employees are ready to return to work.
Well, it may be to our advantage later down the road to even maybe increase the operating hours to be able to bring these other services in. The more we can help our employees stay local, the better it is for us because then they're not off driving an hour and a half to wherever they have to go to do the test and then come back and then lose that whole half-day or whatever it is for that. I understand, looking into the self-assured, the insured part of it, if you come back with a recommendation next year, it's not something that we would be doing immediately.
No.
It's going to take several years for this to phase in because you have to build the reserves, and we have to be sure it's a right fit for our city because we're not sure this is the exact way to go. We think it is, but we're going to have plenty of conversation between now and then to make the decision.
Absolutely. So, the task force will be bringing back information along the way. So, that you're given information in segments to make decisions along the way so that it's not, okay, we got to make a decision today. So, that would be the goal and one of the responsibilities of the task force.
Thank you. I appreciate it, having it in segments so that we can talk about it and think about it, and then we can be ready when the final decision has to be made. We're not trying to dump it all at once. So, thank you very much.
Carrie?
I actually agree a lot with what Wally was just saying there, and that was kind of my concern is this isn't something, because I know we're going to have a lot of changes in healthcare probably in the next 18 months to two years, just again reviewing what's going on, which puts you at a whole nother area. So, I do like the fact you have a task force. I guess I was wondering, is part of the task force, are we going to look for partners? Because most of these cities are larger cities than we are, and that is one concern when we're talking about building reserves. Other than Avondale, which they do have partners, wasn't it like the school district? And, I mean, they had some partners. Would we be looking for something like that?
Not per se. So, as those consortiums come into our radar, and our broker's always looking at those as well. So, he's very much engaged in what's going on with consortiums and also looking at good fits for us. So, that's kind of ongoing. If we find someone that we felt was a good fit for us to perhaps join, we would be bringing that forward. So, along with other avenues of controlling costs, that's one that we're always conscious of and looking at. In this venture of looking at self-funding, we're not necessarily looking at partners. Our partners would be partners that would be servicing our needs for the city on a third-party administrator that would be handling claims or whoever we're purchasing our stop-loss coverage from. Those would be the partners that we would be seeking out as we look at self-funding.
And when we look at, like, the cost to the city, that's all going to be figured in there, the cost for the administration, the cost for the stop-loss coverage, and all that will be figured in there.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. And there are, right away, there's a 2% premium tax, 2% to 3% premium tax that you cut off right away. So, there are lots of advantages to self-funding in terms of bringing down costs on an immediate level. And if there's any more technical questions in that regard, we certainly have Rick here that can talk to those. But there are things that worked our advantage that we would see immediate cost savings on with something like a premium tax that we're currently paying 2% to 3%. Doesn't necessarily mean the numbers work. We've got to do the work to make sure that the numbers work, and that would be the goal.
And what kind of reserves do these other cities have?
I know that, I don't know dollar amounts, but I do know, for example, Mesa funded the building. They actually went out and they purchased a clinic, but the rebuilding of that clinic was funded through their reserves. So, many of these cities have reserves that are substantial. At some level, you can't hold a lot of reserves. You have to put it back into the plan to the members of the plan. So, I think there's always things that you're thinking about doing. Once you have a mature plan with reserves, you're looking, and the advantage there becomes that, it can become a competitive advantage for us as a city in terms of either bringing down our rates, potentially enriching benefits, adding new benefits if we are, and nothing works unless we have a healthy plan. So, as we talk through this, our goal is to make sure that our plan is healthy. So, as we're looking at plan design changes along the way, we will always continue to look at those things to make sure that the health of the plan is there. But some of these cities do have substantial reserves that they've built up over years, over many years.
And when you get to the point with the group, then they'll come back. You said you don't have numbers today, but we'll be able to know that this is how much we need to get started.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have recommendations on what we need to get started, reserve strategy. So, how do we need to build our reserves? And we will be bringing those things back.
Wally?
I forgot one thing, Lyman. I'm so sorry. I'm very interested, as we progress, to know exactly what, if any, programs or benefits we'll be taking away from our employees because that's very important to me. I don't want us to have to really take away anything unless it's absolutely necessary, but we need to know what it would be so that we can know what the playing field is.
Councilmember Campbell, certainly appreciate that. And I think one of the things that we, even in a year when we are coming back with a rate pass, we tasked our committee with actually going out and looking at plan design changes that they thought were healthy. So, we put a lot of pressure on the team, but ultimately, they came back and they said, no, let's stay status quo. So, that's what we're bringing forward to council. And I think at any point in time where we would be looking at some kind of plan change, we would certainly be bringing that to council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think you can go on.
So, another, oh, let's see here. I think I, there we go. So... So one of the things that we're proposing as we talk about cost containment efforts is telemedicine. And the question might arise, what is telemedicine? Essentially, telemedicine is the ability to remotely diagnose a condition and even prescribe a treatment via cellphone, via laptop, via tablet, via phone. And there are significant benefits to telemedicine. In fact, there is research showing that the medical community is actually moving in this direction. One of the challenges that we continue to experience, there's a, there's an urgent care popping up on every corner that you see, and they're making it very convenient to go to urgent care, which is generally a higher cost of service. You can now schedule appointments, you can schedule and get a call back when you're ready for you to come in. They're making it very convenient. Telemedicine offers our employees the opportunity to have 24/7 service, which also, to your point, Councilmember Campbell, expands our clinic, it almost expands our clinic. So one of the challenges that we've had since we have switched providers is Saturday. We used to be open on Saturdays, we're no longer open on Saturdays, so that's been a want and a need for many employees. This goes beyond that. So now we have Saturdays, we have Sundays, we have nights, we have all hours of the day that people can access medical care. It's a much lower cost option, and it is a fixed or flat cost option for employees. And we're estimating the cost of this would be $38,000 to $45,000 annually. If you look at this estimated value of cost or estimated value of services, essentially this is based on $6 per employee per month, so it isn't based on services provided. And if you look at this, this is based on the 531 employees that we currently have today. So we know that that number could potentially fluctuate, and that's based on 37% utilization. So 200 consults essentially would result in, in a cost savings of $58,200. And I think what is most significant here is, these dollars are not hitting the plan either. So when they call and they get services via telemedicine, it is not only a flat fee, but it doesn't hit our plan, and it's accessible 24/7. So we think this is one of the significant cost measures and cost containment efforts that we can move forward with to actually impact our plan and also provide our employees with greater service at a tremendous value to the city.
Sherry?
I really like this. Is this going to be a next year, for next year?
This will be for next fiscal year. And you'll, you'll, there is a supplement that we've moved forward to, moved forward with this, so beginning next fiscal year.
And it'll be like through an app or something?
They have an app that's available. We have looked at various services, have not procured services, but one of the things that we have as a value-added service through our broker is our broker actually has the value-added services that we could procure through them. So there's apps, and one of the unique things about this is that there are various ways of connectivity. So you can use your phone, you can just call up, you have an app via phone. It also has other cost-saving features, so if you want to go out and shop for prices for prescriptions, those things are also available through the app. And there's also connection of services with your provider. So you can connect those services if you're seen by someone through telemedicine, they can send whatever results you have back to your primary care provider.
And that'd be for all the, all three plans that we have?
Yes, all three plans that we have.
That's great. Wally?
So is the cost $6 per employee that they pay, or $6 per employee that we pay?
$6 per employee that we pay, flat cost for the service. So it's $6 per month, so annually, for 531 employees, it would be $38,023. And that is the price that we would pay for the service.
Was there a reason why we weren't passing that cost on to the employee?
Well, and one of the things that we looked at, coming back with a zero-cost increase this year, is what can we do to further help contain cost? This is probably one of the most effective cost containment measures that we could put in place, because every visit doesn't hit our plan. So we felt the return on investment and the value was significant enough to actually bear the cost in a year where we didn't have any cost increase in our, in our insurance.
And do you feel that by offering this to our employees, we're going to cut down on the number of visits to the clinic?
There's potential that that could happen.
Okay.
And we're, we're ready to explore that along the way. So this could certainly be something where telemedicine becomes a more effective and more utilized service, and that's something that we would have to look at. What's the value of telemedicine versus the clinic on the occupational side? So I think we would assess those as we move forward.
That would be interesting for us to know, that, you know, by providing this to our employees, we're saving X amount of dollars. We're estimating we will, we're hopeful that we will, but that would be something else to just validate how, that we're just moving ahead in why we're doing what we're doing. My next question is, are we positive, do we know for sure, that each employee is not going to be limited on the number of times they can call this number?
Yeah, there's no restrictions, no limitations.
Because a young mother could have three children with three ear infections three times in one week, and then tonsillitis the next week, and they're calling all the time. And I just want to make sure there's no restrictions on the employees that they can use.
The services are available, and the greater utilization, the greater savings that we actually generate through this, so.
Okay, and is, are these like the nurse that's on duty, the 24-hour call nurse at Cigna, is this what you're talking about, or is this totally separate?
These are medical providers in the community, so could be doctors, could be nurse practitioners.
Okay.
So they have a network of providers that are available.
All right, and then if, if our employees call this number, since it's not going to be a Cigna number, the one that they're, they're covered under, are they going to have the confidence that this doctor, or nurse, or physician's assistant, or whatever, won't refer them someplace out of the system? You know what I mean?
Right.
We're trying to still cost contain, but we want them to get the best care if they need more than just this phone call.
Sure, sure. And the idea would be that most services, many services through Cigna, in terms of that coordination and referral out, would still need to be referred to someone within network, so.
Perfect, okay, because I don't want them to incur any additional cost, because we in our wisdom are giving them this free service, and then they call this number, and then this person says, oh, well, you have to go do X, Y, and Z, and it's out of their pocket. I don't want that to happen.
Absolutely. I think that coordination, that's, that's one of the things that we would work on, is ensuring that that coordination of care, them understanding our health plan is also part of the package, so that those referrals are happening inside of our system.
That's wonderful. This is, I think, a wonderful program. I'm very familiar with it in a different way, but they used to do this for rural counties, and this is how we were able to get our doctors and nurses from the University of California Medical Center of the board that I was on, to reach those areas, because we couldn't get doctors or nurses out there, and they could not get to us. So it's wonderful, and we need to really explain it well to our, our employees so that they know how to use the system, and hopefully we'll get good feedback from it.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to comment. Lyman, I really appreciate the creativity here, and, you know, I know that a few years ago, when, when the wellness clinic started, I thought that that was wonderful, and it's proven itself time and time again, and, but, you know, you and your team, and everybody that's gone out and been searching for these ideas and ways to, not only, I mean, the charts are showing, you know, the, the coming down of the need, but also just being proactive about everything. And certainly, many of these things, you're not reinventing the wheel. I mean, you have a lot of places that you, a lot of cities, a lot of, you know, that chart alone showed that, that ourselves and Buckeye were the only ones that were fully funded. So I mean, you know, you have a lot of places to look for best practices, and, and I appreciate the momentum and the way that you're headed, so I just wanted you to know that. Thanks.
Well, and telemedicine is big in the hospitals, too. I've been in the hospital several times and saw a doctor over the television and talked to them. And so it would seem to me it'd be helpful, because there's going to be a lack of physicians, all right, fear and simple. So they're, they can't be everywhere. So I think this is just another advancement that keeps people in good health, and if not, if they're in ill health, it's going to help them get better quicker because they're going to get the help sooner. So I think it's ideal.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. Very quickly, our dental renewal. We're looking at a 3% cost increase in our dental. We have the two plans there that you see, PPO and an HMO. Total cost increase is $14,153. Plans essentially stay the same, and you can see on this chart here what the impact is to our employees. 3 cents for employee-only, up to about 60 cents for employee and family on the PPO. And then this plan has always been a no-cost plan, so minimal dollar increase there that employees will fill. Other benefits that I wanted to talk about, we have our tuition assistance program. We have made, and been looking at this over the past year, as we've gathered feedback from employees and heard our employees talk about their desire to grow and learn. This is an area where we feel, the data's showing we're behind the market. So our recommendation is to move to the average. Currently, our annual maximum is $2,000. We'd like to move to $4,500. One of the things that we did, and I should also say, during the economic downturn, or before the economic downturn, we were $4,000. So this would bring us slightly ahead of where we were at before the economic downturn. But we have broadened the scope of what we include in our tuition assistance, and to include other training opportunities, certification programs, so it does have a broadened approach there.
Wally?
Could I ask the city manager a question, please? Is there a reason why we can't go $5,000 an employee? Can you tell us why?
It's $500 more.
I know, I know, but, you know, it's to our advantage that our employees want to...
Yeah, yes, Councilmember Campbell, I'll let Lyman finish answering this. It was really just trying to upgrade it, because we were at $4,000, as was noted some years ago, when we dropped at $2,000, and really just trying to see how much of it could be used. So the simple thing is just to go to the average of our comparative cities to the $4,500, but I think it's also important, Lyman, to point out what we have budgeted for tuition reimbursement, also talk about that it does transcend just tuition per se, and that it would, it's actually likely within the budget to even go up to this amount. So if you could add a couple of those points, I think that'd be helpful.
Sure, sure. Currently, we have $150,000 budgeted for this expenditure, and we're expending around $30,000, or, excuse me, 30% of that on an annual basis. So we're not spending the full amount of what we already have appropriated for it. Our thought was, let's enrich the amount, and let's spend the budget that we have. Based on where we're at, we feel like we'll certainly come closer to fully utilizing that $150,000. So we're kind of find that sweet spot where we're providing the richer benefit, but we're not going over or hitting that $150,000.
So how many employees are actually taking part of this benefit?
There's, I want to say 27, 37.
That's all?
Tuition reimbursement, tuition assistance, how many?
How many people?
Yeah. I want to say 37. Okay, so 35, 37 currently today.
I'd like to see a lot more.
Absolutely. And one of the deterrents we know has been that that $2,000 really doesn't, it's not enough.
No.
So it's, we still have a barrier to people taking that step to begin to take classes. So we think this also will encourage more people, so more people and then greater utilization, obviously, of people who are currently using it. So with that, and with our $150,000 budget, we felt that, you know, let's get it up to average, and if we need to come back and adjust it thereafter, we certainly would bring that back to council.
Yeah, I'd like you to, if you don't want to do it this year, next year, at least come back with the $5,000. I hate that we're at the bottom, or even the next to the bottom, when six other cities are already doing the $5,000. That's the least we could do for our employees that want to further their education, because we want to help them, because it helps, it's just better for us. It comes back to us in more ways than one, I think, personally.
Mayor, if I may, and to the council, this is where we are trying to receive input policy direction. If there's an interest of council in moving this amount up, it'd be great to get the collective feedback at council.
What do you think?
Cheryl Lynn?
My, my question was the one Wally just asked, is how many employees do take advantage of it? And I think it's a win-win situation. This is one of those situations, in my opinion, that when our employees choose to better themselves and increase their knowledge, we win. And so anything we can do in that area, I think, is appropriate.
So are you for the 5 or not?
Post-Great Recession, there were several benefits that we tweaked backwards. What's left that has not been brought up to speed? We're talking about the tuition, and from my perspective, I don't, I don't have a problem with what Wally's talking about, because I think you get it tenfold when it comes back to you. But what are the ones that still have not been, for the non-sworn employees, that is still outstanding, that we haven't totally brought back up yet?
Vacation buyback, there's one other. Retirement health savings account.
One of my concerns has always been, and again, as a former budget manager, I would see people with 15 years of service and no sick leave. Some people use it for, what do you call, mental health days, and some people use it for sick. Now, don't get me wrong, I don't want to encourage people to show up at work that are sick and spread germs, that's not what I'm getting at. But my point is that health savings plan was always nice for those that didn't do that, you know, used it appropriately, and had all this extra sick leave in which they would, and I don't remember what the threshold was, in which they could take some of that money, okay, and put it back towards a health savings plan. So when they retired, they had money in there. I don't know what the cost was before that was implemented. All's I'm saying, I would love to see what that cost was, because it still creates a little bit of incentive, and I don't know, I don't know what the answer is. You know, I don't know how you try to create incentives for those that aren't running up the sick leave, you know what I mean, unnecessarily, if that's the proper term. You know, again, I don't want people showing up that are sick, because that kind of defeats the purpose and spreads the germs. But for those that don't, at some point, and I know we have the short-term disability, it would be nice, because as you get older, you need more, you know, money in your sick, in your, in your health savings accounts. And that was one of those benefits that I think one of the sworn has, has put in, but non-sworn hasn't gotten there yet. And again, I don't know what kind of cost we're talking about. I don't know if it's prohibitive, if it was small numbers, because there may only be maybe a limited amount of employees that would be eligible to it. But to me, it would be nice just to see what those numbers possibly are. Just a thought.
Sherry?
I have, oh, okay, oh, no, I didn't know if you were something. I have two questions. One is with the... One is with the tuition assistance. I guess my thoughts are kind of like, when you have people going for a degree, and it'd be interesting to know those numbers, how many people are using this for a degree, then the $4,000, $500, it might be nice to make it to $5,000, you know, even with, you know, the lifetime learning credit and everything, that I think that would help those people. And, but then the people going for certificates, you know, that may be enough. So, I don't know how we look at that because obviously, you know, there's different needs there. And I do have a concern about, there's been in the news several for-profit colleges that have been basically taking advantage of people who have these type of plans. And that has always been a concern and some of them have gone under now. So, I don't know how we make sure and what we do to make sure, I guess, we want to protect our employees to make sure that they're getting the good education or who we let come contact our employees at career fairs. That's just always a concern with me. The other one is what Joe was talking about brought up an interesting point. When we look at those health savings accounts, I don't know if we use pregnancy as a short-term disability so that the women don't have to use their sick leave because something that you find out is that when the women get to retirement, if they've been offered two maternity leaves to get FMLA leave, they've had to use their sick leave to get paid during the FMLA leave. And so, when you get to retirement, that's a benefit that the women do not get fairly as the men. So, if we are looking at that, I would really like to look at how we address maternity leave and FMLA benefits. So, those are just my two thoughts.
I'd like both of your thoughts, Sherry. I confirm exactly what you've just said. Very good.
And I think looking at that, that full package, I, you know, I appreciate, Joe, you bringing up the previous items that, you know, we had to scale back on or do away with and look at what that means in the big picture of everything again. So, I think that we should look, get those all together. And, you know, it's funny, when you look at that chart and I remember when we were all so thrilled that we were bringing back the $2,000, you know, but if we just remove ourselves out of this chart, it really shows we need to raise it and, you know, it is a, it is a win-win.
Given in other ways.
True.
It's not showing, and that's why I'm always hesitant when he says, well, that, I'm going to round that off, make a little bit more. Well, it's other things that you've already made a little bit more and so, I don't want to get ourselves in a position just so we keep up a number with someone. If we have a quality program, our programs are more quality than they have, you know, and healthcare and all the things. So, I think there's a balance here. I just don't like looking at numbers and saying, well, we have to do this. No. So, I want to, I want to be shown that that's the direction we should be going in.
And that's, and that's a very good point because actually, if we do look at the full package again of all those other things that were just discussed and new ideas, you know, that Sherry's brought up, maybe it's not going to change as many as that because we're then balancing out all the employees' needs rather than, you know, just certain 37s and more.
I think that proposed, as it stands here, you're proposing is acceptable, but to continue to go up without knowing where the balance is on this, I disagree with that, so.
And the other needs, yeah.
Even freedom, something.
Yeah, me too.
You can hardly take a class at ASU without it costing over $1,000 and a three-unit course plus the fees you pay, the $2,000 barely makes a dent. So, I can see why some of our employees don't perhaps take advantage because $2,000 really is not enough. They're paying so much more out of their pocket. And Joe, you teach at the college, you know how expensive it is.
Well, one of the things is we tied that $4,000 in the past to what the tuition was at ASU for a semester, if I'm not mistaken. And what happened is, as a result of our state legislatures, that cost has been going up. So, I'll be honest with you, I'm not even sure what the tuition at ASU for a semester is, but I suspect it's more than $4,000 now.
I think it is, too. I looked at a executive class.
Oh, I could tell you. I could tell you what U of A is right now.
It should be the same.
It is, it's very expensive.
So... Okay, go ahead.
Mayor, if I may, just to confirm the direction at council because this is great dialogue and I appreciate it. Couple of things, just as a takeaway, it does not seem to be consensus and while we're not voting on this tonight, it is direction to come back for April the 18th, when we pull all the expenses together along with the revenue projections as well as CIP. So, this is a critical night tonight to get that direction. So, I am not hearing consensus on increasing, unless I heard that incorrectly, on increasing the tuition reimbursement amount to $5,000, or is that the consensus? And I know, Mr. Attorney, we can't vote, but kind of a nodding of heads would help.
There's just us two.
I'm not nodding.
No.
Just us two.
I want to see the information come back.
I'd like to see the other items.
Okay, so, I got, I got that one right. The other on the vacation buyback, Mayor and council, that was a benefit that, one, it was a big cost savings, the other was the interest of council at that time to make sure that employees use their vacation time to get time away from the, from work and from the office. So, that's one that is not coming back as a recommendation at this point. And then, regarding the HSA, and I'd have to look to Lyman probably as well, if there's an interest on the part of council, we can certainly talk about what that might look like. Again, there are estimates that go with that. We do have that, Lyman, correct me if I'm wrong, but that is in the police MOU right now, but it is not in the other agreement with the fire MOU and certainly not with the employees.
I just like to see the numbers. I mean, we had it at one point and we gave it up and I don't know what the numbers is. I don't know if it was $100,000, $200,000 for the, you know, buyout of vacation and I don't know what the HSA was because it was taken sick leave that they had earned, if they had a certain level, they could roll that over to the HSHA account. So, I'm not even sure how you value that cost because the sick leave was going to be used, you know what I mean, or expire that was going to the, you know, HSA account. So, I just want to see what the cost was and how many were using them. I think there's some value in that since we had it at some time and we gave it up. Again, I don't know what kind of numbers we're talking about, so I think there's value in at least seeing what that cost is.
Do you want to bring it back? Is that what you're saying?
I just want to see the numbers. I don't, I don't know.
The numbers, oh, okay. Yeah, I think we need to see the numbers before we're up here saying, yay, 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 we're going to do this.
Right.
I want to see the numbers.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the cost is, as I'm saying is, let's look at it and if it's something we feel, you know, I'll be honest with you, if you get people who's building all this leave time up, and again, we could deal with the issues that, and I think Sherry raises some very good points as well, is, I'd like to create an incentive, not the ones that are using it, that need to use it. Like I say, I've seen it where there's people, and there may be some major issues, but there's some people using them for mental health days, too. So, I'm trying to find a balance here where you create incentives for those that don't. So, go into an HSA account in which at least down the road, there's some benefit. It won't be initially, but, but I don't know what the cost is. If the cost is prohibitive, the cost is prohibitive, you know. It'd be nice to at least look at it.
We can work the numbers. We'll, we'll come back with some cost estimates on...
Carolyn? And I want to clarify what we, are we looking to, and I'm back to the tuition assistance. Are we, there's a proposed, it says proposed annual maximum of $4,500. Are we encouraging that or are we, are that increased or are we saying, no, let's hold it at $2,000 and look at numbers?
No, I think everybody was in agreement it needed to go up. It's just when you threw the $500 in there, it was like, it's just $500, we'll just do that. I feel a little bit differently. I just think if you've looked at that amount, right?
Right.
The committee looked at that amount. So, I guess, let's let the committee look at the $500 added on, the $5,000. Let's look at that.
I just wanted to make sure that we were looking at an increase.
And then, let's look at the requests here. All of that changes the cost. So, I mean, the output. So, let's get everything together on that. No, I'm not against...
I just wanted to make sure because when Brian repeated it back, it wasn't clear to me what the message he got was, so.
Yeah, that's not my message. I mean, I look at that, that was pretty simple there.
Can we find out how much it would be if it was $5,000?
Of course, he's going to do that. We're not going to hide anything here. He's going to get all the figures and that's what we're asking him to do.
Oh, I thought he was talking about Joe's proposal, bringing figures back.
Both.
Because I thought ours was bad.
What I'm hearing, what I'm hearing, so, what I'm hearing is that you would like, you would like both brought back. You would like an assessment of what the cost would be on the tuition assistance if we raise it to $5,000.
Thank you.
And then, for the HSA, what the cost would be if we reinstored that.
The overall picture of what it does to the budget.
Can I ask one more question?
I mean, you know, this isn't just something separates in a bag somewhere, this is something is going to be with the all-over budget. Sherry?
And I was talking to Joe here inside because I wasn't quite sure how that all worked with the HSA, not the tuition. Would that be at a full cost of a day-to-day or is that something that would be if you have extras? Pro-rated if you don't take it as sick leave at a smaller percentage? I, how does that work? Or is that something you'd have to look into?
You just look into it.
Can you, come on up?
Yeah.
I know, I know that this question's on the HSA, restoring the HSA and...
Retirement health savings, the RHS?
Yeah, the RHS. And what the...
What we would have to do for the...
What we'd have to do for the cost savings for the retirement health savings is look and see where employees' vacation balances are. We could change the program for what we had in the past. In the past, the program, if you were at, if I remember correctly, if you had at least 480 hours of sick leave, you got a payout of 24 hours. So, that payout would be based on your hourly rate and it would be deposited into your RHS. If you had over 720 hours, you got 48 hours of sick leave deposited in value into your retirement health savings. So, depending on the cost, adjustments could be made on that. Maybe there's just one level. If you're at a certain number of sick leave hours, then that amount, based on your hourly rate, if you're at a certain sick balance, could be deposited into your retirement health savings.
So, basically, that's something that if we're going down that road, we can get different figures and numbers to see how different figures and numbers would affect.
Yes.
Okay.
We could look at employees' balances right now.
Okay.
Okay, ready to move?
Go.
Okay, compensation. As we talk about compensation, the employment market has changed and we've seen changes in many ways. We are seeing what we feel is a slow but steady economic recovery from an employment perspective. Dynamic employment market, just in terms of looking at key positions where we are having trouble recruiting and we're beginning to see more and more competitiveness in some areas. An aging workforce that I think is not, certainly not exclusive to us, but we are beginning to feel some of the impacts of an aging workforce that is reaching retirement eligibility. And that's also creating that dynamic employment market. And then, we've seen some incremental market movement. In looking at this, one of our points of interest is annual turnover. If you look at our annual turnover rate, we are seeing an uptick in annual turnover and this has been one of the things that we continue to look at. We do what we call retention interviews and our retention interviews are indicating that the number-one reason that someone might consider leaving the city, retention interviews a little bit different than exit interviews. Exit interviews, they've already made the decision to leave and they're, they're leaving. Retention interviews are current employees who are here and, and we want to understand what their concerns might be. So, number one is total compensation, salary and benefits. Number two is advancement potential and number three is working conditions in terms of, or including equipment and tools. So, those would be the three reasons that someone might contemplate leaving the city based on our retention interview data. As we look at turnover, one of the areas that, again, is a highlight for us is just looking at non-retirement versus retirement. And I think this begins to show the concern around the numbers of employees that we have that are reaching retirement age. So, we're beginning to see the impact of an aging workforce and people exiting due to retirement at a somewhat greater rate. Based on our projections, that number actually levels off, but in two years, it begins to escalate and continues to escalate. So, I think those are points of interest because as we make our recommendation for our salary increase, that is part of what we're looking at. We're also looking at what council's interests were when we initially created the plan that we have right now, the quartile plan, and we do have a new recommendation with regard to that that I'll, I'll talk about. But things that council was interested in when we built the plan, they wanted a structure that would move non-sworn employees closer to market. They wanted to eliminate steps for our exempt employees. They wanted to have a flexible plan, one that was explainable and legally defensible as well. So, what we designed was a quartile plan and this is last year. The quartile plan was successful in doing what we wanted it to do in terms of moving employees to market at a more rapid pace. So, this is just a look at how people moved through the plan last year. And I just show that more just for reference point of view. This year, we're recommending 3.5% increase. If we were to maintain the quartile program, this would be the spread of the quartile program. But what we're recommending this year, because of changes in market conditions, are to go with a 3.5% average increase and essentially have an open range. An open range would essentially make the increase flat throughout all quartiles. We're recommending this because the quartile program, as successful as it was in accomplishing what we wanted to do, also has a lifespan. And through that lifespan, if it lives too long, it begins to create compression at various levels of the organization, typically on the high end. And if it lives in the amount of time that we think it should be living and we think we've reached that point, moving back to an open range, I think, is recognition that the market is beginning to open up and in each of our quartiles, people are seeking movement. So, our recommendation would be to move back to what we would call an open range program with a 3.5% increase across the board. Those two, want to go back? No, I got a couple of questions.
Joe?
Couple of comments and questions. I'm in favor of the open range. I think you've had enough time to squeeze the quartiles together and I think what you end up doing is start to get shrinkage, people too close together after a while. And it's kind of unfair, the ones that you've had here for a while. So, I'm with your recommendation for open range. The other question I have, I do have some concerns about our increase in our turnover rate. And I suspect retention and those leaving, you could hit different reasons. All the classes I've ever taught, management classes, I always like to survey my students and I always found that salary and packages, even though it's up there, is never number one. They're more concerned with culture, they're more concerned with work environments and that type of thing. So, I would just suggest let's delve more into, the turnover rate at 11 kind of worries me as far as the turnover. Now, don't get me wrong, I think change is great to get new, fresh ideas in to the organization, but if we're having too much change, then you lose your institutional knowledge and that, to me, becomes a problem. So, I'm really concerned of the 11% and I'd like to see that somehow, try to keep that under control. Salary-wise, I don't think we pay that bad for an overall package, to be honest with you. But I do agree that the 3.5 across the board is a fair and appropriate way of going as opposed to looking at quartiles.
Any other comments? Joanne?
I was actually going to ask if, in case I missed it, but, I mean, you mentioned the top three for current employees that would retention survey, I believe you called it. retention survey, I believe you called it. But on the exit surveys, what were the top three? Or was that something you were able to garner from it? Or is it too much across different areas that that's hard to gauge?
It is not necessarily hard to gauge. We have top three for people actually exiting the organization. Number one was different type of work. Number two, better job opportunity with another employer. And number three was better job opportunity with another city. So we're, you know, as we reflect on those, we know that people are leaving for other opportunities that tend to generate more income, or more career opportunity potentially. So we're not suggesting that salary is the only factor, or the main factor. We do believe it is part of the factor. And I think as the ice continues to melt off of this economic downturn, and people have more opportunities, we think that's part of our reflection in increased turnover rate. And we think people have certainly a pent-up demand to move and take opportunities that are available. Hopefully, they're here in the city, but if not in the city, elsewhere.
Question?
Yes, Joanne.
Okay, so when you come back with the other numbers for the items that were discussed earlier, you have a 3.5% increase that you're suggesting here, but you're not giving us what that amount is. I don't know what the number is. So I'd like to know the number, along with the other numbers, that you're going to present back. Whether that's here in a work session, or if it's, you know,
It will come back with the budget, but the cost is essentially 869,160. That would include ASRS cost and any other percentage-based cost increase. But that will come back in the budget, and I would certainly rely on budget to bring that number back. But I figured you'd want
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Some estimate there.
I have a question. Will the open range be for all employees?
Yes. All employees, except those that are at the maximum of the range. And those employees would receive 1.75%.
That are at the max, but every single other person, regardless of where they work, will get 3.5%.
Yes, and the only caveat that I would also throw in there, you're going to have people that are close to the top of the range that may not be able to get a full 3.5% because it'll take them over the range. So they would get a combination of a 3.5% and some one-time money, since they've hit max, if that makes sense.
So they're going to get a partial raise and then get money?
Right.
Wow.
So, but the total value of that would be less than 3.5% for those individuals in that circumstance.
The total cost is 169 for all of it?
No, 869.
Oh, 869.
869, 160.
Gee, Willikers.
And I should also say that that doesn't include the one-time, the one-time money that people would get who are at the maximum of the range. The cost of that would be 82,979.
979.
Brian, do you have a question?
And the other exception, if I may, is it would not apply to those employees that are under the MOUs for fire and police. So it does not apply to those that are under an MOU contract right now. So it's for non-sworn.
So it's going to be way over a million, when all is said and done? Well, I know, but we have to pay them whatever the MOU said.
What's your question, Wally?
I said, the cost, the total, it's 951, 979 now. So it's going to be over a million before all is said and done, correct? Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
One last slide.
Oh, you have one last slide.
One last slide.
I'm ready to go home.
And then I know.
That's it, I packed up.
I will blow through this slide very quickly. One of the other things that we have also, every year, we survey a number of jobs. This year, we surveyed 47 jobs with our benchmark cities, to keep our data up to date. But it's been eight years since we've done a compensation study. Eight years, since we have seen incremental movement and seen some structural changes that are presenting problems. We are also recommending a compensation study. The scope of this study would just be for our non-sworn employees, non-represented command staff. We would ask that they do a market update and redraw the regression lines. Because what's happening right now is our plans are not working from a, really a mathematical standpoint. When we grade jobs, there are jobs that are now encroaching areas where our plans aren't there yet. So we would also be asking for recommendations on any compression issues that they may find, and then just to refresh our data. Certainly is a good refresh point. Typically, you know, eight years is getting beyond where you want to go without some level of compensation study. So this is a, I think, a very, I think, small scope for what we're looking at. However, it's a scope in an area that we feel is appropriate.
And this isn't, yes, please. This isn't something you can do yourselves, I take it. This is something that
Yeah, it treats the point beyond.
I'm dying over all the surveys the last two weeks that we've been hearing, given studies that scare me.
Well, if you look at eight years, though, and you look at how things have changed.
I guess I didn't think it's been eight years, because I know that, you know, you guys have gone out and surveyed many things. And so I'm not sure what you, I guess that's what you're laying out, is what we really have missed in all these years. We've looked at other cities. We've looked at, you know, interim type of findings to say where we are. You know, we've looked at all of that. But you're saying that that hasn't included some of these major points that you're specifying right now.
Yeah, and I think, generally speaking, those surveys have been able to keep us at a point where we are, our system is still working. But now we're reaching points where, at some ranges and beyond those ranges, we're not keeping up with our benchmark cities. And in order to move forward, we need someone to come in and to actually do some work. And this is work that we couldn't do. The scope of this study would actually allow us to do a lot of the work. However, the aspects of the work that we don't feel like we could do, we'd certainly be taking to the experts.
Yes, Sherri?
Are there any studies that we can partner with other cities that might be ready to do their studies too, to save us a little money here?
Come on, go look.
It's kind of hard when our structure's a little bit differently.
Well, if we're comparing, then they're going to have to compare somehow. Even if they're different, they got to compare it somehow.
I wish it was so easy. I wish we could negotiate something along those lines.
I'd grant for that.
I would say that
And how much does this cost?
The cost will be somewhere between 20,000 and 35,000, which is significantly lower than our initial projections, and significantly lower than the last time we did a study. So we were over 100,000 the last time we did a study. We had projected this one would be 100,000. But because of the work that we can do internally, which we are going to be taking on a big portion of that work internally, and a lot of what we've done with our market surveys throughout the years are going to help us considerably, we've been able to bring that cost down. So I was actually very pleased when I heard 35,000 was the top number.
It is what it is.
Well, you know what? The insurance didn't go up.
It is what it is.
You know what? There is a positive, because the last couple of years, that's been major. And, you know, made me, you know, kind of, every time that, you know, we saw that. So, but that doesn't mean we need to go spend more money, just because we saved that, you know.
Well, we could do it ourselves, and then we could have all the citizens questioning the validity of it all. But I mean, you know, you could do that, guys. If you think that
Yeah, they'd be thrilled that we didn't have somebody else look at it.
Yeah, the citizens are going to say, and who did this study?
Yes. Hey, there you go.
Anyway.
All right, thank you, Wally.
I don't want to interrupt you again. Is that, like
That's it?
The end?
The end.
It was great, thank you. It was well done. And I think you got a great conversation going on by the rest of the council. And there's a lot of questions and things that they want to take a look at. So now is the time. Counsel, if you have anything for our city manager on current events, or anything? I'm going to pull it together, and two of them on this one, if you have anything that you want him to look into. Anybody here? You're off, so Brian, why don't you talk now? This is your turn.
May our members of the council all be brief. The one thing I would say is, thank you very much for the feedback tonight. And I'd also thank you for your continued support of the employees. It really shows through the questions and what we're trying to do collectively. And that sends a strong message to our employees, not only here, but that we'll be hearing about this later. So thank you for that. I only have one item that I'll bring up, and that's the Saturday, as you know, we had our millionth fan at the ballpark. I sent an email a little bit earlier this afternoon, but just real quickly. We had, not only did we have our millionth fan after eight years of being open for business in the Cactus League, but we also had 11,616 fans. I don't know how many we had sellouts for standing room only, but that was a new record for us. Indians playing the Cubs. And another great thing is the Indians kicked their butt. So we always like to know that, too. Apologize for people that may be from Mesa, but I'll get even later. But the other thing is, it was pretty special to see Jean, let me get her last name, Jean Wilson. She was a millionth fan. And if you were there, I mean, if you had a chance to see her there, this is a lady who told us that she's normally subdued. And when you see the photos in there that I sent to you, this lady was jumping up and down for inning after inning after inning. And she characterizes saying it was the best day of her life when it was all said and done. So we showered her with confetti, with stuff, with a jersey. She had a chance to win a million dollars. And for the record, counsel, that would not come out of our budget. We had a good insurance policy, and you had to pick a whole lot of envelopes.
There was not a study done on it before.
There was not a study done. But anyway, she did win a trip to Las Vegas. She, originally from Ohio, she lives in Vegas now, go figure. But I do want to say this. It took a, really a team effort, tremendous gratitude to our ballpark staff and the Parks and Recreation, but also PD, fire, streets within traffic to pull this off. Getting those amount of fans there, in and out safely and quickly, was phenomenal. So just, you know, thank you for your continued support there, and it was a pretty special night for us.
Great. All right, the next meeting will be a Community Facilities District meeting, and a regular meeting on Monday, March 28th, 2016. This meeting's adjourned.